Everyone, thank you for your patience. Welcome to the June 19th, 2023 Meeting of the City of Pacifica Planning Commission. This meeting is called to order. May I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Berman.
Present.
Commissioner Devine.
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Chair Hauser.
Present.
Commissioner Wright.
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson, can you please lead us in a salute to the flag?
Of course.
Before we get into administrative business, any member of the public wishing to make public comment on this agenda should complete a speaker card and bring it to the front and hand it to staff. On the agenda card, or on the card, please indicate the agenda item number on which you wish to comment, or oral communications for items not on the agenda. Members of the public may also participate in the meeting via Zoom. There is also a dial-in option for making public comment. The phone number is 669-900-6833. Once dialed in, enter conference number 811-5615-8241, and then press the pound key. Once the chair has announced the public comment opportunity for the item on which you wish to comment, press *9 to raise your hand if dialing by phone, or the raised hand function in Zoom. City staff will then identify you by your name, or by the last four digits of your phone number when it is your turn to speak. If dialing in, once identified for your turn to speak, press *6 to unmute yourself, wait a few seconds, and then begin speaking. Be sure to mute any other broadcasts you may be watching, such as Channel 26 or the live stream. Also, dial-in instructions are shown on the screen. I will call each speaker, whether in person or by dial-in, for their public comment opportunity. So moving on to administrative business, do we have any public comments on administrative business? I don't have any for me. Do you have any on the phone?
Chair Hauser, I see no raised hands.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda? Commissioner Ferguson?
I approve. I move that we approve the agenda as noted.
Commissioner Berman?
Second.
Please vote.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Fantastic. Next, we have approval of the minutes of June 5th. Are there any comments or edits to the minutes, or does someone have a motion? Commissioner Devine?
Motion to approve minutes.
Is there a second? Commissioner Godwin?
I second the motion.
All right, let's vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Designation of liaison to city council meeting, we have none listed. I just want to confirm that's still the case?
Correct.
Okay, fantastic. Then moving on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes, and I do have public comment tonight for oral communications, so we'll start with Mayor Big Stick.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, Commission staff, and members of the public. My name is Tiger Jazz Twirls Big Stick. I am the mayor of Pacifica. I want to start by saying that it's highly unusual for any council member to show up at a Planning Commission meeting, and I will not be staying for very long. I have no intention to be here as you all deliberate on the matters at hand, but I did want to take the opportunity, since it is Juneteenth, to wish everybody a happy Juneteenth. And since there is not a city council meeting tonight, I thought I would take a moment to just show up and say that this is an important holiday. To my mind, while we celebrate liberty and freedom of our country on July 4th, again to my mind, we did not truly achieve freedom in this land until the June 19th holiday, when truly those most oppressed in our country were freed. So I wanted to take a moment and express the importance of the day. Thank you all for your service, including the public, whom serves by merely making known what their opinions and their community are, that we all may work together to create this a place we wish to, and somehow muddle through this process of freedom to have something far superior than if we did not honor our freedoms as we do. So thank you, everyone. Happy Juneteenth to you.
Thank you. All right. Next, I have Pete Shoemaker, followed by Mike Vernaza. Oh, I'm sorry. I think just Pete Shoemaker. Mr. Vernaza, I have you for item two.
Okay, hi. Pete Shoemaker, Pacifica. I'd like to talk about the quarry reclamation plan, as you probably guessed. We all know that the public is in charge. You work for the public, the public pays the salaries of the staff. We must be respectful employers, but as one of the employers, I want to let you know my due diligence as I think through, and I take this very seriously as I think about projects for Pacifica as one of your employers. The quarry reclamation plan, the large fill one, that has been the only option that's been presented so far, proposes to put a million tons of loose dirt above a sewage treatment plant outflow in an area that is prone to huge storms and major earthquakes. My sense and due diligence, that is incredibly risky. If that pile of dirt somehow goes down and plogs up the sewage treatment plant outflow, we are all in deep doo-doo, literally. Sorry about the bad joke, but it is. And so my sense is, and with all the disruption, that the reward for that, if there is such, far, 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 the risk far, far outweighs the reward. You're proposing it to do with the company, Bayland Soils, as we all know, their founders are in jail for bribery over a seven-year period. Billy, the boy that came here, and I'm saying this is not a court of law, he's not in jail, that's for the courts to decide, but I'm using my brain as a certainty with due diligence to think, what's logically going on here? Billy worked with his father in the same companies, in the company business. He was in the same company for that time, for seven years. To think that he did not know what was going on is ridiculous, and this is in my mind. I'm not condemning him in courts, but I'm thinking about what's the realistic of hiring this guy? He knew about it, either he turned a blind eye because he didn't want to rat out his dad, which I could understand, or he embedded the part of it. So now he's forced into a position where he's really way out of his depth. You saw that. He's been into construction, he doesn't know about this. Very few people know about a project of this magnitude, so he's forced into a leadership role in an area where he's really green. Now, think of the, think of the product of the logistics over a four-year-plus period of hiring the truck drivers, the testing soils, the paperwork, the construction workers that have to shore up that hurdle of dirt to give it any possibility of chance of not coming down on you. Think of all that labor. Do you think that the labor pool in the Bay Area, that they're going to be able to hire and maintain those people over all that time? And with their reputation as a felon-driven business, do you think that people who are skilled workers are going to want to work with these people? Are they going to trust that they're going to get paid? They're going to get the bottom of the barrel. Anybody who's breathing is going to be able to get a job, and they're going to shove them in there with no training, and this is shoring up a massive mountain of dirt that is very complicated. As you probably saw in the plans, there's detailed things about pages and pages of swales and retaining walls and things that have to be done specifically. Do you think that kind of skilled labor is going to be managed over a period of time? My sense is no. Completely no. This is crazy, and I wouldn't hire those people to do even the no-fill option. So think it through, like due diligence, like you would do with any other contractor for Pacifica, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Mr. Vernaza, I actually have you as item two and non-agenda, so I think if you are wishing to make a comment, please come to the podium.
Thank you. I appreciate you listening to me today. I'm not exactly sure how to properly address you, so I appreciate it, and thank you for all your hard work. The part of the, I guess what I want to bring up, that's not part of item two, is just to express my interest in pushing back on Sacramento and the things that they're forcing these local cities to do, not only along the coast, but throughout California. It doesn't seem, within the constitutional rights, I'm not a lawyer, and I really don't have the time to read through that, but I urge this city, and likely you're not the committee to do so, to join Huntington Beach, Marin, Yuba City, and others, and at least fight, do something. You know, I'm not sure if you were born and raised here, but my family's been here for over 100 years, started on Mission Street hustling produce, and I still bust my ass every day to call myself a Pacifican, and I'm proud of it. But when I see these numbers, it's pretty shocking. You can do simple math and start to roll up ADUs and the density per acre that I'll get into later. When I have a heart attack in 20 years, how am I going to get out of this city on a sunny day? If we're going to go this big, I'd really like to see a full medical facility in this town. This is dangerous. We can't get out now. I mean, I just watched a fire department try to get through town just last weekend. He couldn't get through right there at Viamar, and again, of course, over by Seaball, where I'm seeing something like 600-plus units that you want to be able to allow there, which... Are we getting a four-lane road? I'm not sure, but for the non-agenda items, I really urge somebody in this town to join these other communities and try to at least voice our concerns back to Sacramento. Thank you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Vernaza. I don't have any other speaker cards. Is anyone on Zoom or on the phone? And reminder that if you'd like to raise your hand, you can press *9 if you're dialing in.
Chair Hauser, I see no raised hands.
Okay. Then I will move on from oral communications to new public hearings. So the first item under new public hearings tonight is file number 2018-021, Annual Review of Use Permit UP-106-18, Authorizing Outdoor Seating at the Taco Bell Cantina Restaurant Located at 5200 Coast Highway. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ranu Agarwal, and I'm here to present to you the report on the second annual review for the outdoor seating at Taco Bell Cantina on 5200 Coast Highway. Just as a little background, the use permit 10618 was approved on October 1st, 2018. Condition number 19 of the approval called for two annual reviews. First annual review was conducted in 2020, at which time the Planning Commission found the facility in substantial compliance with the conditions of approval of the use permit. This is the second and the last of the two annual reviews, which were required by condition number 19. A site visit was conducted on May 20th, 2023, and I will present to you the findings of that site visit as far as the compliance with the conditions of the use permit are concerned. So if you look at the screen above, it is compliant with 16 out of the total 20 conditions of approval that were approved by the Planning Commission in 2020, and it is non-compliant with four conditions. Condition number one, which calls for development to be substantially in accord with the plans, which were approved in 2020. Condition number six, which has to do with exterior lighting, where all the lighting has to be downlit and buffered so as not to have any glare impacts. Condition number 12, which has to do with the alarmed gate installed as a barrier between the beach and the outdoor seating, and the signage that is supposed to be on that gate. And condition number 20, which has to do with providing seating in that area, which is accessible to persons with disabilities. So this is pictures which show you the extent of the seating on the outdoor patio. The approval was for a total of 38 seating and staff counted approximately 76 seating spaces with number of chairs and two tables added on to that area. Then this, these photographs are representation of non-compliance with condition number six with the lighting, and that arrow points to signage which says "Emergency Gate Only." It's supposed to say alarmed exit, emergency gate. And then condition number 20, there wasn't any seating to kind of point to as far as disability seating was concerned, so there wasn't any seating pertaining to condition number 20. I received an email from the operator of the facility, subsequent to the preparation of the report and some middle of it. They do have a new or a couple of new tables installed for accessibility, but that was after the staff report was submitted. The main issue here is the seating capacity. With that, staff concludes the report on the second annual review and recommends that Planning Commission accept the resolution for accepting the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any Commissioners have questions for staff? And then is the applicant or property owner here, and do they wish to speak?
Their attorney is here, and he did mention to me that if you had any questions of him or if you wanted to address him, he's here to address your concerns.
Chair, good evening. Commissioners, Planning Director Christian Murdock. I do want to clarify that the public comment component tonight, there is no applicant, so all members of the public, including any representative of the property owner or operator, will have three minutes to address the commission. Certainly, the chair can entertain questions of any particular individual.
Thank you very much for the clarification. All right. Do we have question? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Wright, followed by Commissioner Devine.
Just one quick question. When you were at the site, did you notice if they happened to have a defibrillator on site at the restaurant? And is that a code requirement?
I am not certain whether it is a code requirement or not, but I had noticed one.
Thank you. Just seems like an ideal location for one to serve the public interest. That's why I asked.
Agreed. Quick question. So I understand that this is the last check, essentially, for this resolution, and it'll be closed out, but what happens further down the line when we continue to see non-compliance?
So you're correct. The original approval of this use permit for the outdoor seating area provided for two and no more than two annual reviews at the time. The commission has the opportunity, as the way the conditions of approval were approved and imposed on the outdoor seating area, to amend conditions of approval if necessary to ensure compliance with the original approval, so that is an option for the commission. In addition, whether or not the commission does that, staff will be taking these facts for follow-up action with the operator to ensure that they are brought into compliance with the approval for the outdoor seating area, or else we will make a recommendation at an appropriate time, if compliance cannot be achieved, to invoke a use permit revocation proceeding. So those are some of the options the commission has tonight, and we're happy to provide more information about how to evaluate or to impose any one or more of those options.
Now be an opportune time to just deliberate between the Commissioners about this.
I think we will take public comment before we deliberate.
Thank you. Commissioner Berman? On packet page 61, the first paragraph of Section C, Additional Staff Analysis, I believe there's a typo, but for clarification, the sentence that mentions the date range of the analysis says from May 2020 through June 6, 2020. I'm guessing that should be June 6, 2023. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. That's it. Okay. Seeing no more questions from Commissioners, I will open it to public comment. I have one speaker card, Mr. Dan Kramer.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Dan Kramer, and I was involved with the original use permit in 2018. In the process to obtain the use permit involved numerous meetings with the planning department and several months of dialogue. At the time, the planning department were great to work with. We all worked together, and it was a great experience. From the date of approval, the restaurant operator has endeavored to comply with all the conditions listed in the use permit, and as mentioned in the staff report, the city conducted annual review in 2020, and the operation of the outdoor seating area was found to be in conformance. And over the past several weeks, the restaurant operator has been in active dialogue with the planning department to discuss potential changes to the layout of the outdoor seating area, and I think it's important to note that this visit, the planning department was invited to the restaurant by the operator to take a look around in connection with that dialogue, so this wasn't a surprise visit. I just want to address the four conditions that were called out in the staff report. And the first one regarding the seating, there's actually not a specific seat count number listed as a condition in the use permit or in the conditions to the use permit. That 38 number in the original floor plan, there was five big tables that had a total of 38 seats at the time, and there's been some changes made to those tables. So it's not a specific number in the report, and I couldn't find any number for that. Regarding the floodlight, condition six, that floodlight's been there from day one, and there's been no changes made to that floodlight, so we're a little bit surprised that it was being deemed non-compliant now. Condition 12, there is an alarm gate to the beach. I believe at the time, there was some problems with the alarm, but that's been fixed, so I just want to let you know that it's fully functional now. And then in terms of condition 20, there is, as the planning department mentioned, there is now an accessible table, which I believe has room for about four spaces. Originally, in the original floor plan, there was only space for two accessible seats, so I can't fully address the, you know, the building code and things like that, but it seems to me that there's more accessible seating now than there was originally, so just wanted to bring that to your attention. And, you know, I'd ask that this not be deemed to be non-compliant, as I think there's questions about that.
Thank you very much. Any additional speakers? I don't see any other cards. Is there anyone on the phone or on Zoom? A reminder to dial *9 to raise your hand if you're calling in.
Chair Hauser, I see no hands raised.
Okay, so with that, I'll close public comment and move it on to, we can combine questions and deliberations. Commissioner Devine, did you want to start?
Sure. I'm one of the lucky few that got to grow up in this town, and I appreciate the fact that applicant has been so willing to let staff into the facility to sort of see what's going on and, you know, create an opportunity for input, but I personally would like to see this period extended a little bit. I personally believe when alcohol is added to the situation, sometimes it takes a little while to work things out, and if anyone's been down to Littimer Beach on a gorgeous day, which I often am, it gets a little hectic. It gets really hectic, and you have a facility in the sand that serves alcohol, and you have staff there that may not always be able to manage things on their own, which is not their fault by any means. So it just seems like this is such a new thing for the cantina to be a cantina. It would just be, I feel it would be nice to extend this period a little bit.
Commissioner Berman?
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Devine's comment, and my understanding of the staff report, and just when we typically see these annual reviews, is that we are able to adjust the conditions of approval at this time, in which case can we modify a condition of approval to require a third annual review?
Yes, Commissioner Berman, that's an option. Our advice to give due process to the applicant and any members of the public would be to continue the public hearing, to allow us to provide notice of what the proposed modification is, but that could be a direction to come out of the commission's deliberations tonight.
Thank you. I would be in support of that, but looking forward to hearing from other Commissioners. And additionally, I appreciate that the business owner has been very cooperative and very proactive in already starting to address the areas of non-compliance, so I feel confident that these issues can be remedied.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. I also wanted to thank the restaurant for, you know, operating here in Pacifica. We're always looking for good food spaces, and it's nice to see one so well patronized. I did have a question based on the staff report and also based on what the community comment was. So the staff report says that 38 persons were approved. Public comment says, the public commenter said that that was just shown on the plans, but I think the more limiting factor is that the fire department has determined the permissible occupant load to be no more than 49 persons. Is that, is that a safety? I mean, can you please speak a little bit more to the 49 persons?
Certainly. So typically, there's a limit on occupant load of 49 or fewer in spaces that only have one quote-unquote "exit" for fire or emergency exiting purposes, and so this is one such site in our fire marshal's observation that to have an occupant capacity in excess of 49 would need a second approved exit, and so that is a code limitation on the number of persons that should be allowed to occupy the space.
Yeah. I appreciate that there's a safety issue here, and I think that it needs to be kind of reviewed in that vein. I mean, I would support the idea of a third annual review, but I also would support, and I don't know how the other Commissioners feel, but I would also support the idea of giving the restaurant, you know, 30 or 60 days to work with staff to decide what the best course of action that would be, whether that means coming back with a plan or amending the use permit at a staff level, so... Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ferguson, I didn't see you.
No, you took most of what I was going to say. I would also support a 30-60-day review period. It sounds like two of the four are already addressed, maybe. I've read the emergency exit is fixed, and I noticed that there's an emergency exit sign. It looks like it's installed properly, it just was a problem with the function. Is that correct?
The function of the gate was fixed, like the alarm was fixed, but there is a sign up there which is an easy fix, so staff can, you know, coordinate with the operator to fix that. And I received some pictures which showed the accessible tables also being brought on to the patio area, so those two can be addressed. I can discuss...
A point of clarification, if forty-nine persons is the maximum, and I guess we're not taking the exit through the building as an exit from the space, is there a rule-of-thum amount of seating that you're allowed to have for a forty-nine person maximum? I mean, it's thirty-eight, and you assume some number of people standing? Or is there actually like some specific limit we can give them to work off of?
Yeah, it's a great question, Commissioner Ferguson. I'm not an expert, but my working knowledge of the issue is that there is a different ratio of square footage per person assumed for non-fixed seating, in other words, standing area or someplace where foldable or moving chairs might be placed down, and a different formula that may be applied to places with fixed seating in these assembly-type occupancies. So beyond that, I can't quote for you the applicable ratios, but it may be a combination depending on fixed and non-fixed seating area.
Do we have documentation of having provided this information to the owner?
I'm not aware of such documentation, but it's common knowledge for architects that are licensed in the state of California.
I just mean, it's possible they were unaware of their noncompliance on this particular issue.
They were aware of the noncompliance when we did the second annual review. We found them compliant substantially in conformance with the conditions in the first annual review. And second review was the opportunity to actually examine the site and see what was compliant and not compliant. So they were informed at the time the second review was conducted.
And if I could answer the question in a separate way, I have no doubt that the architect that prepared the original drawings was aware of that code limitation. And since the last annual review, for example, could an onsite restaurant manager who's not an architect unknowingly violated that limitation by saying, there's space to have more seats, we're really busy, let's put more seats? I think that's a perfectly reasonable conclusion to reach.
Sure. I guess the last one on the list that I had was for the lighting. If it pre-existed the permit, the request is that they would then replace the existing fixture or shroud it somehow? Is that all they need to come into compliance?
They could shroud it somehow.
And I'm not understanding how the use permit, there might be a night skies ordinance or something that they're not in compliance with, but the fixture was Title 24 compliant before the use permit, and now it's no longer compliant based on a condition of the use permit? I was at that meeting, but I don't recall our conditions all that well.
That needs to comply with the guidelines for lighting, which has to be that there is no glare off-site from the facility, and that's why the condition called for down-facing lighting. And this is something which is kind of like a flashlight.
I'm very familiar with it.
Yeah. As the report says, there have been no complaints about it, but it doesn't strictly comply with the condition of approval.
Okay. So what's being asked of the applicant is to shroud it or replace it?
Yes. We can, in this report, we were trying to bring to the planning commission what were the noncompliant items, and we really haven't had that conversation regarding some of the issues.
There's more than one way to resolve the issue, certainly. And certainly, it's within the planning commission's prerogative if they say, you know what, staff didn't identify that in the first annual review. It was existing. We don't want to ding them. All we're bringing is the observations on the date of this inspection. I don't have a good explanation for why we didn't identify it as noncompliant in the prior annual review.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Berman.
Thank you. Touching off of lighting, I guess if we were to agree with staff's recommendation, I'm wondering if the lighting in the patio would be still sufficient from a foot candle perspective? Because if, I guess if that light was there the whole time, perhaps it's necessary in order to get the required lighting for use?
Sure. I'm not aware if there's a foot candle or lumens requirement for this particular illumination. What I can say is the building code typically requires that entries and exits have sufficient lighting for safety for people entering and exiting a building. So certainly, a modification to this fixture is something that we would check with our building official to make sure the lighting was sufficient and wasn't causing some other inadvertent code violation that then causes some secondary issue.
Okay. And then in that case, if it's determined that additional lighting would be necessary, that wouldn't have to come back to planning commission, would it?
It would not, no. I mean, a minor change of a fixture or installation of a second fixture, we could find that substantially compliant with the original approval, grant the necessary building permit at a staff level, and avoid coming back to the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you. And then back to occupancy, my read of the staff report was that building code requires the thirty-eight person max for occupancy. Is that correct?
So the plans that were submitted when the planning commission approved the use permit showed seating for thirty-eight persons, which were the plans that were reviewed by the building official as well as the fire department. And they reviewed that number of seating and based on that information, determined that the project or the outdoor seating area was approvable for fire and building. So they haven't really seen anything added because no amendments have come in through the formal process for review by each of the departments and then gone to the planning commission for their review and determination. So when we say that, or the staff says that they are noncompliant with condition number one, it specifically speaks to compliance with the plans that were approved, except as modified by the conditions that follow. So that's how the occupancy was determined. And when the second annual review site visit took place, staff did confer with the building official and the fire department. And the seating that is present there now is not something that would be approvable per the building code or the fire code. So.
Is there a concrete number of what is acceptable, given the square footage of this patio, for a maximum occupancy? Is it forty-nine?
The forty-nine number is based on the exit that is available from the outdoor seating area. But if you were to subtract out passage space, et cetera, which people would need to evacuate, it comes to about thirty-eight according to what the fire.
So it sounds, so based on this total square footage for having the one exit, forty-nine maximum occupants are acceptable, but then subtracting out just access space and evacuation space, is it building or fire code that says thirty-eight, or is it staff's assessment that says thirty-eight is appropriate?
I am speaking to what I, input I was provided by the building official and the fire department. So I couldn't cite to you where exactly it says that in the fire or the building code, but we can follow up on that. But those were the feedback provided by the building official and the fire department.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we may need a bit more information, but my comfort level is if building code allows a certain amount and if the fire department believes it to be safe, then I would feel comfortable with that number.
Are you comfortable with the idea of sixty days for the restaurant to figure out what their plan is?
Yeah, and actually, if I could ask one more question related to that. So what would be the next step? So if we allowed thirty or sixty more days to allow the business to come into compliance, what would be the next step? Would we come back to planning commission?
Right. So approximately sixty days from today would take us to the August 21st planning commission meeting. So one potential motion for the commission to consider is to continue the public hearing on the annual review to August 21st and to provide all required noticing to initiate a modification to the conditions of approval to add a third annual review to the use permit.
So we would modify that condition of approval at our next meeting?
That's correct, because we would need to provide public notice to the applicant and others of the proposed modification to the conditions of approval. And then we would concurrently consider that modification and acceptance of the report for the annual review. The commission would have an opportunity to hear any progress that's been made towards compliance at that time, and so they'd be able to consider all those activities together.
Thank you. That sounds good to me.
Commissioner Devine.
Yeah, just piggybacking off of what Commissioner Berman had said, I think that was where, I apologize, I wasn't very clear with my first comment. That's really where my concern was, was occupancy. When things are crowded and hectic, and it's a great day, and staff is, you know, not well-versed to make that call. So I'd be comfortable with the sixty-day review. I think it's important to give them a number, you know, if we can guide them in that direction. I know that often PD and fire has stopped by, per the staff report, and have felt it has been acceptable, the number on the patio. That's just where some of my concerns were on soup, those really, really crowded days where, you know, staff is doing what they need to do to make the restaurant go. So I'd be comfortable with that.
Okay. Commissioner Godwin? And then I'd be willing to take a motion.
Yeah, my question is, is there currently a max occupancy sign on the patio?
No, there isn't.
I think that would be a good addition. There's an awful lot of restaurants and entertainment venues that post the maximum occupancy and the management, and the customers are expected to abide by that.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. Any other questions, comments, or motion? Maybe staff could help us with the appropriate motion, considering what's in the staff report probably is not what we discussed.
Sure. So the suggested motion would be to move that the planning commission continue the public hearing to August 21st, 2023, direct staff to provide public notice to propose an amendment to the conditions of approval of the use permit to add a third annual review, and to require a maximum occupancy sign to be installed in the outdoor seating area, and as part of the research related to the maximum occupancy sign to determine with the building official and fire marshal what the current configuration would allow in terms of a maximum number of occupants under building code and fire code.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Commissioner Berman.
So moved.
Is there a second? Commissioner Ferguson.
Second.
Please vote.
And that motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item two, discussion of objective development standards for housing element rezoning program. Is there a staff report, please?
Yes, Chair. Momentarily, we'll have senior planner Brienne Harakusha come up, and she will deliver the staff report.
My name is Brienne Harakusha, senior planner with the planning division, who will be giving the presentation tonight. As part of our housing element update, the city must complete the phase-one rezoning in the housing elements program to rezone and accommodate the regional housing needs allocation by January 31st, 2024. Based on that short timeline, the item before you tonight is to begin the discussion of objective development standards that would accompany this phase-one rezoning process. As mentioned, the study session is intended to kick off the preparation of objective development standards relevant and applicable to housing element sites listed in our housing element update. The discussion tonight will be centered on higher densities with thirty dwelling units per acre and above. In recent state law, such as SB 35 and the Housing Accountability Act, there are limitations imposed on cities' discretion to review housing projects. Adopting clear design rules or regulations would allow Pacifica to front-load their housing development review discretion. The intent is to establish objective standards for residential properties zoned for multifamily development to ensure that new development is compatible with Pacifica's existing high-quality Objective development standards are really measurable, non-subjective items that give cities the ability to achieve high-quality design for projects. And as shown on this slide, an example of a subjective standard reads as, "The style and design of new buildings should be in character with that of this surrounding neighborhood." And counter to that is, below that is an objective standard that reads, "On side yards abutting residential proposed, third story shall have setback at least five feet from the wall plane of the first story below." And the primary purpose of objective development standards are to provide clear guidance to developers, to help minimize confusion, delay on processing projects, and provide greater certainty when preparing plans to submit to the city for a project. As part of this discussion, we are requesting that the commission review the introductory materials and provide feedback and direction on types of objective standards that they would like to see in this policy document. Additionally, staff is requesting that the commission advise on any topic or material they may find helpful as part of this process. I'll now go through some examples of density ranges and how they may look on a lot or street frontage. And this is intended to set the stage for the commission to understand what a proposal may look like depending on the project. As shown on this slide, the range that would be most applicable to the rezoning of the housing element sites would be closer to the last two options as high density. Visually, this diagram serves as a representation of how a site on a one-acre lot could accommodate various types of densities depending on the standards imposed on the particular lot. For example, the twenty to thirty dwelling units per acre lot shows a walk-up style apartment with surface parking and is three stories high. Something with a higher density, such as greater than forty dwelling units per acre, could accommodate a podium or wrap-style building that is four stories high. These are examples of certain densities when you're looking at a particular vantage point. And as shown on the top two figures, the figure on the left shows a building that is setback more from the street compared to the photo on the right that shows a building that is closer to the street. But that still provides articulation and quality design. Similarly, the two photos on the bottom of the slide show development with more units than compared to the figures above. The photos on the bottom of the slide show a variety of how to set back a building from the street or very architectural style to accommodate that setback. This is an example of a mixed-use project with higher density that provides setback of the top floor from the floors below. As you can see, the building provides articulation along the wall planes, and the third story setback contributes to that. Staff established six core objective standards to aid in the commission's discussion and provide direction when reviewing these sites. The standards listed on the slide are setbacks, lock coverage, floor air ratio, height, open space per dwelling unit, and parking. Staff evaluated other cities in the Bay Area with adopted objective design and development standards and provided examples of these as they relate to the six development standards we are focusing on for our phase-one of the rezoning process. And these examples were included as attachment B to the staff report. As mentioned, the study session is the beginning of our process, and there will be more discussion on the exact standards in detail. After we receive questions from the commission, staff's prepared an exercise for the commission to review the housing element sites and visualize the types of standards that would be most applicable to the sites. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So before I open it up for questions, I just want to frame, there's no decision that's being made, I want to understand correctly, that there's no decision that's being made tonight. The goal here is to review these six categories, if you could put them back on the screen.
Yes.
So. So setbacks, lot coverage, FAR, height, and open space per dwelling unit, and parking, that we set the core objective standards for the sites that are listed as rezoned in the housing element that was sent to HCD that's currently under review by HCD?
Chair Hauser, yes, that is correct.
Okay. And so will this effort be guiding the objective standards process that staff is going through and helping scope the secret document? Is that a?
That's correct. Good evening, Commissioners, Planning Director, Christian Murdock. That's correct. So in addition to the particular sites identified and the assumed number of units and densities that are in the current draft, any additional information and direction that the commission gives about potential zoning standards like height, setbacks, et cetera, will have relevance for the city's environmental review process. In other words, preparation of the environmental impact report for this Phase One rezoning program.
And with the feedback that commissioners and the community give tonight, am I correct in understanding that staff will then come back with more formal development standards for us to actually review and take action on?
That's correct. So this is a study session of sorts to have a dialogue, to figure out what the commission may like or not like based on staff's information and input and community input. But yes, at some future point, there would need to be a formal public hearing process to receive additional public input, provide all of the associated noticing, and then have the commission make a recommendation to the city council on the actual zoning standards.
Okay. So with that, I think we should open up to questions. So does anyone on the commission? I saw Commissioner Berman and then Commissioner Wright.
Another process question. So for tonight, are we allowed to discuss individual sites in detail? So for example, if perhaps we have thoughts on objective standards particular to a specific site, are we allowed to discuss that tonight?
Yes, Commissioner Berman. We have prepared an exercise for the commission to review about 10 of the housing element sites, and those are particularly for the rezoning sites as part of our Phase One process.
And there are the sites that were diagrammed in Appendix F of the draft housing element where there's already been an effort by staff to identify the portions of the sites assumed for housing in the housing element. And so that would be the starting point we'd recommend and that we're prepared to support for the commission tonight. And then if there's a desire to get into further discussion, which we assume there likely will be, we can bring back another item to bring back another set of sites. Tonight, we're going to gauge how much the commission can get through with 10 that we're prepared, again, to support the analysis for. Beyond that, we may not be prepared to support that discussion tonight.
Related to that, are there any sites that commissioners may need to recuse themselves from in the later activity?
I think there is. There's one site we've identified with a potential conflict of interest for one of our commissioners, and so whether it's now or just prior to bringing up that site, we would need to disclose that conflict.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Wright, followed by Commissioner Ferguson.
Just to start out, could you describe your process for community outreach to allow the community to have plenty of opportunity? Because this seems like this is significant to the changes that are going to potentially occur over time here in the city.
Sure. So there has been a robust public outreach process for the housing element update, including numerous public meetings, citywide mailer, online newsletter, on and on. For tonight's meeting, in addition to the regular Planning Commission agenda distribution process, which goes out to hundreds of recipients, we did send out an email notification to the housing element interest list that people have signed up for over the previous months so that they were aware the commission would be discussing this subject matter tonight.
And then additionally, could you describe for me how it is you figured out the parking requirements? Did you base it on the number of bedrooms? Did you base it on occupancy? Did you base it on square footage? What were the criteria that you used?
So for tonight's discussion, staff has not proposed any particular standards. This is for the commission to discuss and consider. We can give you reference information from what the current code has, not all of which is particularly well transferable to sites like this, because our zoning code traditionally has not been designed to accommodate projects of these densities that we're talking about of 30, 40, 50 units or more per acre. So it's really a blank canvas of sorts that the commission needs to give some initial direction and over time, shape that into where we're going to end up in this process with some of these six core objective standards for developments of this type.
And then additionally, in terms of setbacks, like I noticed a 15-foot setback as one possibility, and it seems to me that a typical car, not that we're suggesting that they're going to be parking cars in front of it, but by doing 15 feet, it seems like in the eventuality that we ever do change it and we allow people to park cars in front, we're asking them to park their cars over the sidewalk, which doesn't seem too smart. We ought to either make it shorter to keep that possibility away or make it deeper to make it a realistic possibility. I was just wondering how you came up with that concept?
Commissioner Wright, I don't believe staff has proposed any objective standards. So the objective standards that were attached to the staff report are a sample from other cities, but not what staff is proposing.
Okay, but I just see problems with some of the possible ones.
Chair Hauser, that's exactly the kind of feedback we need to hear. So it's not necessarily the case that for every standard or every site, the commission will know what it wants in terms of X number of feet height or setbacks, but even to hear what our concerns are so we can brainstorm how to address them in a future recommendation, just as Commissioner Wright did about parking related to setbacks, that's extremely helpful feedback for staff.
And it's not just that, too. It's the relationship between the amount of front setback, the percentage of lot coverage, what size does that then, with a typical Pacifica lot, allow you as a rear setback from the other buildings? There's a lot of moving intertwined parts here that I need to be able to try to totally grasp the relationship between them all.
Okay. Commissioner Ferguson, followed by Commissioner Godwin?
I have just two procedural questions for staff. The first one, I recall during the local coastal land use program in Sharp Park specific plan, we sent out community email surveys to gauge community support, and that was pretty granular in terms of specific parts of West Sharp Park. Would you support this density? Would you support this level? Has there been any thought into doing something like that now that we have some kind of direction on rezoning to gauge community support for what these design standards might be rather than just having us as a commission try to represent the people best we can?
That may be a possibility, Commissioner Ferguson, and it's a best practice and certainly something I'm open to conceptually. Part of the challenge is the timing and the resources available to commit to this particular rezoning process for what we're coining the term Phase One. This is the mandatory rezon to accommodate the housing units process, and we're trying to incorporate a minimal number of objective standards as quickly and efficiently as we can to accompany that, that we have to complete by January 31st, 2024. I can very much imagine maybe it's more likely we can do a more robust community engagement process as part of the Phase Two objective standards, which are going to be much broader and probably allow an opportunity for more granular feedback, as you put it. Whereas here, we're just trying to create it, so to speak, an envelope to protect the city in the in-between time between doing the rezoning for the sites and the time it will take, which is probably the better part of a year or more, to do a very in-depth, comprehensive zoning update with many more objective standards. So we're trying to strike the right balance in terms of time and resource commitment now versus later.
Sure. I appreciate the dilemma you guys are in, and I understand that we're trying to avoid the builder's dilemma here. So good feedback, and then we'll look forward to getting more granular later. I guess just for tonight, so I understand what the goal is, are we trying to create some kind of like a matrix that's site by site that sort of breaks down each of these six objective design standards? And are we able to go specific site by specific site, or are we putting them into classifications?
Yeah, so the way I think, my vision for organizing this for tonight, after we go to public comment, is to start with the more complicated sites that are in Appendix F. I believe there were 10 of them, if I'm remembering correctly, where in the housing element draft that was submitted to HCD, there's a polygon that shows where housing is expected to occur. Because those are the most complex, I figured we would start with those 10 and go site by site. And then if, you know, if we get through those, continue down the other 10 or so sites that are on the list, and if not, try to find a date to come back.
Yeah, I'm supportive of that organization.
And Chair Hauser, here's a preview of the first site in the slide that we've prepared. On the left is the graphic from the draft housing element, and on the right is a reference to the site location and the six standards that we're suggesting the commission discuss tonight. And we've prepared one of these slides for each of the 10. And we can also have as an additional resource, a Google Earth image that will allow us to pan around and see what site constraints or considerations may be unique to each site to help make that a broader discussion.
Thank you. I think that's going to be very helpful. Did you have other questions, Commissioner Ferguson? Commissioner Godwin, did you have questions?
I had four, I think. The first one is a procedural question. I noticed on your slides, you mentioned the word duets. It looks like that's the same as a duplex. Am I correct?
What slide was that?
You'd have to go back and show it to me. You were giving some illustration of some housing units. Here it is. You're on the correct one. Under 12 density units, single-family duets, front. What does the word duet mean in that context?
Yes, so I believe that the intent of duets is, I think duplex, right? A duplex-style apartment or kind of like a double.
Okay, thank you. I thought that's what you meant, but I never used that word that way, so wanted to make sure. Like the idea that you could have two different height limits for the one, the housing unit closest to the street and the one behind it. I think that's a real effective design strategy.
Can we limit it to questions at this point? Because I think we should take a community comment before we start giving feedback.
How tall would the back house be using that design concept, in your opinion?
We haven't evaluated that as of yet, but that is something the commission can explore further if, when we go down through the exercise and look at different sites, the housing element.
Well, my third point was, I've seen a lot more electric cargo bikes, people hauling kids to school and picking up groceries and stuff in town. And I noticed the Chinese are doing a lot better, like BYD, at exporting their little mini cars that weigh less than 1,500 pounds and are much smaller than a 6,000-pound American style SUV into Europe and Southeast Asia and stuff. When you consider parking, have you thought about the change in the mix of vehicles that are likely to be on the road within the next 10 years over, you know, when these kind of housing plans are likely to take place? Because I think it's going to be substantial.
That's a great observation and question. I don't think we've considered any standards for tonight. But yeah, the parking standards are mainly from the municipal code.
Right. I think, again, Commissioner Godwin, that's the type of feedback to consider those issues and whether we can project likely trends in the future that might influence our long-term parking standards that would be built into these sites. So if that's a type of guidance and direction you want to give to staff during the commission discussion portion of the item tonight, we would very much value that sort of feedback related to the off-street parking standards.
Understand. And finally, it sure seems to me we've got way too much retail space, and I know there were a couple of questions about adding retail space. My guess of the future, there's going to be a lot less retail space in town and more goods are going to be delivered through things like Amazon Prime. So have you thought about shrinking the amount of retail in town? And if so, by how much? Rather than growing it, as some folks have suggested?
I would say that as part of this process, we've not considered a reduction to commercial areas. I will say there is an important constituency that advocates for more commercial space. I can't say whether or not that's based on economics, but I would say it's based in part on a perception that Pacifica does not have very much commercially designated area to begin with relative to other communities. And so it could be a difference of opinion. It could be reaching different conclusions on different data. I would say as a policy matter, we've tried to ensure that there are opportunities for mixed-use development so that we can create more walkable communities with employment and shopping opportunities near to where people live. But whether, you know, that's right in every case where we've identified that or not, you know, that's important input from the commission as well.
Okay, questions? Commissioner Devine?
Just a really quick procedural question, and this is more so because I'm new to the commission and I haven't been a part of this entire process. And I'm sure this is a question that's come up for community members often, is this, you know, developing these standards in an effort to try to fast-track rezoning, once these areas are rezoned, is that a green light for development for the owners of these properties? What exactly does that mean?
That's a wonderful question, Commissioner Devine. What we're trying to do with these objective standards is several-fold. So we are, in the first instance, trying to create, again, this envelope, if you will, not only in the building form, but in terms of provision of off-street parking and usable outdoor area and so forth, that will be minimum standards in place in the event a project comes in before the city puts in place more complex and more robust and far-reaching objective standards. Another thing that this process is trying to accomplish is putting together a baseline set of standards to build on in that Phase Two process so that we get the types of projects that we want in Pacifica. And, you know, that relates to the third issue, which is that under state law in recent years, the legislature has started to take away local discretion related to the development review process. And so what that means is, as Senior Planner Harkushe mentioned, cities historically have relied heavily on subjective development standards and general plan policies that no one from the development community could reasonably forecast and project. And they would spend a lot of time and money and effort going through local development processes. And for whatever reason, on the whim of a commission or a city council in a given community, their project would be denied because at the 11th hour, it was determined not to be consistent with some subjective development standard or policy. The legislature said that's anathema to providing enough housing that California needs in light of the housing crisis. And as a consequence of those past actions, local agencies can only evaluate these types of housing projects and deny them or reduce the number of units they've proposed if they fail to comply with objective development standards. And objective development standard is particularly defined so that an individual can look at a standard and with reasonable effort and judgment, understand what it means in terms of what can and cannot be built. So that cities are not applying subjective standards to undercut projects that otherwise meet the adopted zoning. And so that's, I'd say, probably the top three objectives that we're trying to accomplish. The consequence of that is what you mentioned, that developers will have an easier time, not exactly a green light in most instances, to just go build, but to have a clearer path to approval through the process so that they can more reasonably and timely and cost-efficiently obtain a building permit to actually build the housing that's in the housing element.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. So with that, I see no more questions at this point. I'd like to open it up to public comment, and I would just like to remind folks that there's a dial-in option for making public comment as well. The phone number is 669-900-6833. The conference number is 811-5615-8241. And to raise your hand, press star nine. With that being said, I have two-speaker cards. It's Mike Vernazza, followed by Carmen Lozo.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Carmen Lozo. I'm from the Local Carpenter 217, San Mateo County. I have been in the field for 18 years. I'm here to speak about the labor standards in the housing elements setups. Manlopar is housing element site to the policy 7.2, local labor encouragement developers and contractors to evaluate hiring local. and contractors to evaluate hiring local laborers, hiring for the contribution to the apprenticeship programs, and also increase resources for the labor complaints and privileged living wages. I ask that Pacifica include such a previous housing element, and we provided Manlopar, Foster City, and Redwood City for reference. Thank you, and you have a great night.
Thank you. All right. Mike Vernazza.
It actually seems a shame that there's not more community members here involved. I hope I can change that in the near future as this thing progresses. The examples on that slide certainly are reminiscent of what's happened on the other side of the hill in places like the town I grew up in, Redwood City, where now we have fluorescent stucco, disgusting, ugly-looking places that are built as cheap as possible. I hope that doesn't happen, and we can at least acquire better building standards with, like Hardy Board and other things that won't rot and look disgusting in three years with the type of climate that we deal with here in Pacifica. You know, Scott Wiener and like-minded individuals in Sacramento have pushed this agenda to have a soft heart for drug dealers and other people that have then created this place where you get 800 bucks a month from anywhere in the country and just move here and do drugs, and use these sad images to say that we have a housing crisis. I work with a lot of people that make plenty of money and still decide to move out into the valley because they can own a real home with a backyard. I think some of these things need to be recognized. You know, right now, I'm missing bowling tonight after C-ball is closed. We're now at Monday nights up the hill. Still a great experience. So I just want to know, what are we doing to bring the community together in some of these spaces? There's no good, honest fun left to be had in this town. Are we just going to have places where kids can go drink underage at Taco Bell, as an example that came up tonight that just didn't seem to get mentioned? Or anywhere else? I've got children to raise in this town. What are we going to do if they're not athletic, that want to surf like me or go mountain biking? I'm not sure what to do here. And I am absolutely for building more housing in a responsible manner, but I pray that you guys make the right decisions and do it the right way and not just make it obscene. You know, this town is so special, you obviously know that. We're here because it looks like this and doesn't look like Santana Row or any of these other places that have been blown out in downtowns. I mean, if I have to, I'm going to burn my entire retirement to try to protect this town through legal means. I pray to God I don't have to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last speaker card I have. Does anyone else wish to address this item? Yes, if you could fill out a speaker card, great. You could hand it to Mr. Murdock. Callie Drake.
Yeah, thanks. This is my first meeting, so I apologize if I didn't know how to make it work. But I just want to ask a couple of quick questions. One is, or make one comment and ask a question, if that's okay? The sort of question comment is that I attended one of the feedback sessions, one of the group where everybody attended and gave feedback about different sites. But, and I, when I signed up for that, I put my email in, all that stuff, but I was not notified of any follow-up whatsoever. So I luckily saw on Facebook, Pacifica Locals, that someone posted this meeting. But I think that, I'm wondering how the public is supposed to find out about meetings like this in advance? I mean, I'm lucky that I could make it here, but I have lots of community members who are interested in attending these things, who didn't find out about it in time. So that was my question, one of my questions. The other one I have is, are there any objective standards that you're also considering about how roads in and out of the sites will be required to be updated for safety, accessibility, traffic density? I live in Sharp Park. I live really close to Oceana High School, and it is currently very, very difficult on school days to get in and out of the neighborhood as it is, let alone with the number of housing, number of units we're planning to add. Our roads are not made for that. I have a small, young child who will be walking to school. I worry about his safety. So I'm just wondering if there will be any objective standards that will be considered for that? Because right now, it feels like we're just going to add a lot of housing, but we're not taking into consideration how that's actually going to impact our roads and our communities and our safety. So I'm, I also believe very strongly that we do need more housing in this community, but I just have a lot of questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Drake. Are there any other comment cards or speakers from the audience? Okay, seeing none. Oh, yes, come on up. Please state your name for the record, and then please fill out a speaker card when you're done.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Patrick Mora, architect. I go from San Francisco to Pacifica, work and go often to these two places. And I really appreciate this meeting. Christian has put it really clear on the objective development standards. They can be very, very helpful to let everyone understand what a project needs and how to solve those needs for a specific project. I think, but I think all of us need to approach this with an, to explore with an open mind and without fear. We have to be open to diversity, and we have to be open to mixed use, to open space, playing against parking or the requirements. And I think we should treat the parking individually for each project, because what we've seen on the screen is larger projects that require parking in a different way. This is not the regular single-family home or the duplex. This is more parking that can go underground or that you develop something that is surrounded by a parking lot. So it has to be well-thought-out. Parking is a big issue. The setbacks, I think there can be work on it. The FAR, that's the Florida ratio also. And the coverage, those standards are good, they're in place, they protect the neighbors by having yards adjacent to each other. You set away from the street parking. Everything is controlled. But in a way, again, each project is different. The height is something that comes up often, and we might want to encourage building setbacks. If you look at a commercial strip, you set back the buildings at a certain dimension so that they don't oppress the walker or the street. And terraces should be allowed on some roofs, just to liven the scene for commercial and housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Okay. Is there anyone on Zoom with a raised hand or anyone on the phone?
Chair Hauser, we currently have seven people with their hands up.
Fantastic.
All right. I will call the first caller, ending in 9761. You may unmute yourself.
Reminder to press *6 to unmute.
Hi there. My name is Jamie Wessel, property owner of Wessel LLC. And I'm just curious to know, for Site 32, what the changes look like in terms of the property and the development, in terms of what we are doing moving forward, and how the city actually did not know that we had stake in the property and, moving forward, what they're going to be doing to better change or any sort of feedback in regards to that development?
Next caller is Suzanne Moore. You may unmute yourself.
Thank you, honorable commissioners. Suzanne Moore from The Manor. I appreciate that the commission has set time aside for further public input on sites and standards for housing construction to meet our RENA goals. I also appreciate efforts to have our housing element provide for safety, environmental protection, and address public transit needs. 60% of the RENA goals for Pacifica are for moderate, low, and very-low-income housing. It's important to discuss where this much-needed housing can be constructed, but equally important to discuss how it will be constructed, especially since we failed in the past. I've heard from many sectors that there are three ingredients to a successful housing project: land, money, and community will. If we want to attract contractors to below-market, to build below-market-rate housing, we must provide a pathway in our housing element. Other communities offer ways to save contractors' time and money, and I sense our draft housing element provides some of those incentives. But our inclusion rate of 15% will not go far to meet this community's needs for the 60% moderate-toVery-low-income housing goals. So what concessions are we willing to have for for-profit contractors to build more below-market-rate housing? And what pathway can we include in our housing element to attract developers of low-income housing? Soon, we hope to get HCD feedback for our first housing element draft. And in feedback to other communities, the HCD has been critical of inappropriate site selection. So today's discussion may give us a jumpstart on that critique. The HCD has also been critical of lack of specificity and firmer commitments in programs and policies, and more robust analysis of housing, fair housing issues. Creating a pathway for nonprofit developers to participate in Pacifica's goals, committing to programs that keep unstable, unstably housed Pacificans in their homes, and having our housing element reflect Pacifica's unique position to marry housing needs with environmental protections, these are what I hope our housing element can achieve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kimberly Finale, you may unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can hear you.
Thank you, Commissioner and staff, for your presentation this evening. It was informative and nice to visualize. And the comments that I've noticed might be helpful have to do with the enormous amount of time that I've spent outside during the pandemic and many observations that I've made during that time while many, many people enjoy the outdoors and continue to enjoy the outdoors since what we've all been through over the past few years. And so I think it might be helpful to take some of that into mind while engaging with developers who are proposing to build new housing. I would like to encourage the installation of wider sidewalks while building new housing to encourage the use of outdoor spaces and allow plenty of space as an alternative to getting in our cars. I'd hope that the interest, that in the interest of environmental responsibility, new development will include connectivity aspects such as walkways, which lead somewhere useful, like a park or a grocery store, as well as bike paths, which ideally would serve the same purpose, leading to, you know, safe foot and bike travel to local schools and beaches and beyond. Lastly, one thing that I've more recently noticed as I stroll the beaches here locally almost every day is the huge quantities of discarded plastic water bottles that I pick up and discard, again, almost daily. There's a huge amount of plastic water bottle use in this town, which is really surprising to me because we are so environmentally aware. And what I have noticed that is lacking is refillable water bottle stations for those of us who carry our reusable canteens and water bottles. And I would hope, I'd like to hope, to introduce refillable water bottle stations while requiring developers who will be building here in Pacifica to include community parks for the new communities that they will potentially be building. For the children who will be living in this new housing, their parents won't have to get in their cars to take them to go play.
Thank you. That concludes the time. Thank you very much for your comments.
Next caller is ending in 1606. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, I think you can hear me. This is Two Degree. We are, we need revenue to be able to do anything, to keep any quality of life going. And, for example, in Number 35 and Number 36, we're visitor commercial. Our city does not have Genentech, et cetera, and so we are a destination. So without visitor commercial being more robust, if we start limiting that, where is our revenue going to come from? We need to be sustainable for any quality of life. Some definitely for truly affordable. I don't really see that we're getting truly affordable. One reason that we live here is because it was affordable, and in the last 10 years, Pacifica seems to be going into much higher bracket of being able to live here at all. But I think, of all things, we need to be sustainable, so be really careful. I'm always also concerned that, again, so many people apparently don't even know that this meeting is going on. I really think we need, leaders need to help to empower the voter, empower the residents. And flyers and being able to meet and discuss and work things out together is very important. There seems to be, Toni Atkins, I believe she's a senator now, who is beside, behind pushing for more housing, has said recently that these RENA numbers and these other mandates were never meant to be a sledgehammer, and yet we seem to be in a panic to get things done. And we're kind of leaving out the residents who live here now. This is our community and the ability to craft it, sanely, humanely, and fairly. So please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Our next caller is ending in 0067. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Samantha Byrd, Sharp Park resident. And I appreciate the chance to speak up in this meeting, so thanks for having us all. I'm glad that earlier in the meeting today, this evening, that the group discussed maximum occupancy in relation to safety in a restaurant setting when we were discussing Taco Bell, and that the 49-person limit has been determined to ensure the safety of patrons in case of an emergency because there's only one exit there. This argument feels spot-on when discussing the housing concerns. Adding the proposed units along Highway 1 specifically, the neighborhoods that are along Highway 1 with only one entrance and one exit prevents emergency services from accessing people in need in our community and would limit residents' ability to safely and efficiently access medical or other emergency services when in need. Additionally, our hillsides have been designated as fire vulnerable by, at least I know, our insurance company and all other ones. And I think we've all seen the writing on the wall with that. And we're also in tsunami danger zones. There are already challenges in evacuating. There are already challenges in evacuating efficiently with our current population. We'd be exponentially increasing our vulnerability and danger as the population along that route increases. These plans seem to lack foresight, in my opinion, and are negligent as they currently are. And I do agree also with a couple of other speakers today that the public would want to participate more if they had a greater awareness of what's happening. So I look forward to hopefully in future meetings having more people attend. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is Rich Campbell. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Rich Campbell from Ballamar District, former Planning Commissioner here in Pacifica. First, I would suggest that you make very clear during this meeting and hopefully subsequent meetings what traffic impacts, what congestion impacts, and VMT issues. What can be incorporated into the conditions that you're going to be imposing on these developments? And really make clear to the public, you know, what can be asked for, what can't be asked for. I think this is going to be a real important set of issues, particularly with regard to residential development in the quarry and Ballamar School traffic, and also Ballamar District traffic getting out of Reyna del Mar, and the already poor traffic conditions that we have in the mornings. I think residential development in the quarry also just is going to be quite an issue. That, I would almost suggest you remove that site from the housing element. But if you don't, it would be good to really make it clear what we're doing with transportation impacts. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next is Cliff Lawrence. You may unmute yourself. Cliff Lawrence, you may unmute yourself and speak.
Is there a next caller? We can come back to Mr. Lawrence.
Cliff Lawrence, we will come back to you. Next, we have Judy Hanson. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. So, multiple, yes, one is, like, already it seems like we can't handle our own sewage, that our beaches are renting so high, and the status of safety and sewage pollution and so forth. And then also, we'll come to that on these mandates coming from higher government, because we know there's intense corruption in our government right now. Congress is said to be the best congressman you can buy. I mean, a whole lobbying thing is about why, and then they say, like, oh, it's from Governor Newsom. But what if he got voted out? Then are we still stuck with all this building? And then the thought about wanting to maintain the feeling of Pacifica, but we can't have both, I don't think. Open space loss because of buildings, or keeping buildings to, you know, three and four stories high. I think we need to build towards the north end of town where we have access to public transportation, and maybe some in the south, but mainly to the north, and build hall and build user-friendly with parks and space to walk, and retail for sure on the bottom, affordable retail. And I'd love to see green building, like, you know, room for people to have plants or building, you know, greenery on top and so forth. And I liked it was mentioned about public transportation and bike paths and people-friendly use areas. And Redwood City was brought up, maybe some of their construction wasn't that good, but a lot of their building went up and high, and it looks nice, I think, and I'm not a building person per se. But in the meantime, they were able to save their wetlands from being built on. So I appreciate all the efforts that you do to include the community, and I just really think, you know, wow, who is this pushing all this stuff on us? Don't they know we have an ocean on one side and these steep hills on the other, and we already can hardly get in and out of town? So I think we need to stand up to these mandates. And I think together, hopefully, we can. So other than asking us that what building we do just be green and our minding of materials and so forth, that's about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judy.
Next, we have Nancy Turney. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Nancy Turney from the Manor District. I want to acknowledge the variety of sites throughout the city that favor infill development for numerous reasons, including availability of utilities and proximity to retail and services. These sites should take priority over sites that are difficult and costly to develop. However, some sites could support increased density, allowing for more units that meet moderate and low-income needs. While Pacifica historically has far more single-family homes to meet current demands for affordable housing locally, I encourage the city to pursue the multifamily housing sites with objective development standards, as you've laid out. As part of the general plan, the housing element appropriately must be tied to other elements in the plan. In addition, the housing element can be buoyed by the city's Climate Action and Adaptation Plan getting underway later this year. The primary goal of the CAP update is to find ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions attributed largely to transportation. So infill housing near services and public transportation can help achieve that goal. In a recent program bridging the climate housing divide, presenters from Green Belt Alliance, Nature Conservancy, and other organizations contend that infill housing reduces greenhouse gas emissions, and the reasons for that are less driving and easier access to public transit, lower water and energy use, allowing open space to remain a carbon sink, and fewer roads to construct and maintain. The speaker from Nature Conservancy says that through infill and nature, we can address the biodiversity, climate, and housing crises. So I pose that as both a vision and challenge as we move forward with plans to increase affordable housing of various types, both permanent and interim, through the housing element. We keep that in mind. In anticipation of comments from housing and community development on our submittal, I encourage city staff and commissioners to work on robust policies that make certain sites viable through agreements with private and nonprofit developers and various funding mechanisms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have caller ending in 0458. You may unmute yourself. Caller ending in 0458, you may unmute yourself.
A reminder to callers that you can use star six to unmute yourself.
Do we have other raised hands? Cliff Lawrence, you may unmute yourself.
Are Cliff and the other caller that did not respond the last two hands?
We have one more caller. It's actually a repeat caller.
Okay, let's go to them to see if there's someone else with them. And then we'll try one more time with each of those callers, and if not, we'll continue.
Caller 9761, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm just making sure you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, caller.
I am just calling.
So this is a reminder that if you have already spoken, you are limited to three minutes. If there's an additional person that would like to speak using this phone number, they may.
I promise you, I won't be three minutes. I just don't think the last time that I spoke that, I think there may have been some technical difficulties. I just wanted to reach out to make sure that I am actually the owner of Site 32 in terms of the rezoning and development, and I just wanted to know exactly what is going on with my property.
We appreciate it, caller. We were able to hear you on this end. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Have a great night, and thank you for all the work that you do.
So let's give the last two callers one last chance, and if not, we'll continue on.
Caller ending in 0458, you may unmute yourself with star six.
Let's go back to Clifford Lawrence.
Cliff Lawrence, you may unmute yourself.
Okay, for the last two hands or callers, Mr. Murdock, would you remind folks what, if they want to submit a comment electronically, if they're having technical issues with the phone, what email they can use?
Sure. For anybody that's unable to speak tonight, you can email your public comments to publiccomment@pacifica.gov. Publiccomment@pacifica.gov.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. So with that, unless any other hands have raised, I'm going to close the public comment. And then just a reminder to folks, thank you, everybody who came and spoke. I think everyone kind of has a sense that this is not a dialogue, so when questions are asked, we can't answer them live. But I think, you know, we do, as Commissioners, have an opportunity to kind of re-ask your questions. And so with that, I did want to start by taking a cue from something that I see Mayor Big Stick do, and going through some of the questions that we heard. So I think one of the questions that we heard a lot was, how can folks find out and stay up to date on the process? If staff could speak to that.
Sure. So with respect to the one commenter who mentioned she had signed up but didn't receive an email, I will try to find a way to get in touch with her, or she can contact me after the meeting to figure out what exactly happened in that specific case. But more generally, folks can visit planpacifica.org and go to the Housing Element portion of that page and sign up for our mailing list. Once they sign up through that page, they're automatically added to the mailing list that we use to send out notifications, such as the one that we sent out for tonight's meeting and for future discussions of the housing element as well.
Is it possible, Mr. Murdock, as a government agency, to post to Nextdoor in Pacifica to allow people to also have insight into future meetings pertaining to the housing element?
It's certainly possible, and we do that from time to time. It really depends on the timing, our workload, and the type and nature of engagement that we're trying to accomplish for a particular item. So we also include mentions in the Connect with Pacifica Weekly Newsletter. So folks aren't receiving that from the city, they can also contact the Planning Department or the City Clerk's Office to sign up for that weekly newsletter from the city, where we include mentions of upcoming community meetings, special topics of interest like the housing element, and so on.
Okay. And then, a couple of the callers had questions about traffic, and my understanding is that that would be studied in the EIR, that would be forthcoming for this housing element. Is that a correct understanding?
So it depends what folks mean by traffic, which may sound like a silly answer, but from a land use planning standpoint, it matters what you mean exactly. So historically, traffic congestion, you know, the number of vehicles emanating from a particular project, were evaluated in the environmental review process. A few years ago, the state changed the law to prohibit cities from using what's called Level of Service, or LOS, which is a measure of congestion, is part of the environmental review process. So the environmental impact report that we're preparing for this Phase 1 rezoning will not evaluate traffic congestion as an environmental impact. It will, however, evaluate vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, which is the new permissible metric for determining vehicle-related environmental impacts. In other words, the number of miles that a vehicle will travel, or the vehicles emanating from a project will travel, how does that relate to greenhouse gas emissions as it relates to climate change as an environmental impact, is what will be evaluated as part of the EIR. Elsewhere, as, you know, one or more commenters astutely mentioned, the housing element is part of the general plan, and it needs to be integrated and internally consistent with other elements. In the general plan circulation element, we do have a level of service standard for our roadways. And so it's in that sense that either as part of the general plan amendment process or on a project-specific basis, or both, that traffic-related, congestion-related impacts will be evaluated for consistency with the general plan.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Berman, I saw your late, do you have a?
Yeah, specific to this one, just while we're on it. Are we allowed to make effectively a level of service determination an objective standard for a site? Could that be, or I guess, what leeway do we have on making objective standards related to traffic, given that, you know, for example, Level of Service isn't going to be reviewed in the EIR?
Sure. I suppose it may be possible, but I would argue that the general plan already has a Level of Service objective standard. I believe it's Level of Standard D, as in DOG, but I would need some time to confirm that. And so I'm not sure that it would be necessary to do that. More particularly, what we're trying to accomplish with tonight's discussion is physical development standards for the sites themselves and the buildings that might be constructed on them to get a basic envelope of what can be built and the maximum sort of profile of what that development would look like. Other types of off-site impacts that would result from these projects is probably beyond the scope of what we're prepared to assist with tonight. And as I mentioned, the general plan already has a Level of Service standard.
Okay, thank you.
So I think I only have one more before I move on. So there was a commenter who called in about property that they own, and instead of focusing on that particular site, if staff could maybe speak a little bit more to what the implication of the housing element is for property owners and what level of involvement property owners need to have, that would be really helpful.
Sure. So property owners are welcome to engage in the process as any other member of the public. We made a broad, citywide appeal to mailing addresses by sending a citywide mailer. So every property in the city's been contacted, including those that are proposed for inclusion in the housing element. Whether folks have chosen to participate or not along the way is theirs to make. But for someone that may want to reengage or realize that they're not engaging or receiving the notifications that they would like, again, they can go to planpacifica.org, make sure they're signed up on the mailing list, and share with us any public comments that they'd like about the process.
And while the housing element will, in fact, make land use changes, it's my understanding that there will not, that the housing element in no way requires property owners to make improvements or build anything or change their land. Is that a correct understanding?
That's absolutely correct. So essentially, what the housing element's doing with respect to sites at a basic level is demonstrating to the state that the city has land use designations and sites sufficient to accommodate its mandated minimum amount of housing to be built over the next eight years. It does not mandate a property owner to agree to build housing. It doesn't result in the government coming in and building housing on any private property owner's property. And so the decision whether or not to develop for a given property owner remains entirely their own. By including a property in the housing element, however, it may make it easier for a property owner that wants to construct a housing project that's consistent with the housing element to actually get approval to construct that housing. So there are trade-offs, certainly, but at the end of the day, the decision's ultimately that of the property owner.
Okay, I really appreciate that clarification. So being that we're pushing nine and we've got a lot of work to do, I think at this point we should move over to analysis. As someone that very As someone that very much supports building housing, it's what I do for a living. I do agree with a lot of folks who have said that this process is kind of like taking a sledgehammer to something that typically requires a scalpel. So it is hard to digest, you know, especially with the level of public transportation that Pacifica has. It is hard to digest the number that we've been given, but it's been given to us by the state. And at this point, I really appreciate that staff has brought this item before us because with state law, I think the risk here is that if we don't establish this building envelope with the six different items that staff has asked us to review, if we don't establish this envelope, people can come in or developers can come in and build whatever they want. You know, eight store, I don't want to put too much out there, but I think it's really important that we establish the envelope. So I appreciate that this is what staff has started with. I mentioned a little earlier that I'd like to go site by site for the 10 sites that are in Appendix F because I believe they're the most complex. And so, you know, typically, we're pretty formal up here and we're pressing our, our buttons. I think at this point, folks should feel comfortable just speaking. And when we, very similar to what Commissioner Berman did when she chaired the general plan and we went element by element, I think at the end of each site, when we feel like we've given staff an appropriate amount of direction, we'll kind of confer and then move on to the next site. Does that work for everyone? So, okay, Mr. Murdock.
Chair Hauser, perhaps now we could give Commissioner Devine an opportunity to disclose her conflict of interest related to one of the sites, so that if she chooses to, when the site comes up, she can just depart the meeting without further alteration of the process.
Commissioner Devine.
Thank you. I do have to recuse myself from the Seabowl site because I own real property in Rockaway Beach and that's considered within 500 to 1,000 yards.
Commissioner Murdock, of the 10 sites we're doing, can we do the quarry site last so that Commissioner Devine can participate in all the other nine without having to come back?
If you mean the Seabowl site?
I'm sorry, yes, the Seabowl site.
Yes, and we can structure that site to come up last so that Commissioner Devine can be here for the first nine and then depart if she so chooses and not come back. And to clarify, 500 to 1,000 feet, Commissioner Devine.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, so Fairmont Shopping Center. So if, if no one has an initial, like an initial thought, I'll just say, when we looked at this under the study session that we had with council, whole APNs were identified as to where housing was going to be placed. I appreciate that in the document that was sent to HCD, staff took kind of the most nuanced and complex sites and further refined the polygon to where housing is allowed. So I believe, if I've read this correctly, that the blue polygon is where the city will be allowing housing. So for Fairmont Shopping Center, for example, it's not the whole shopping center. It's just the acre that's in blue. It's up to 50 dwelling units per acre. I don't think that we're able to talk about density because that's already been sent to HCD and would have to come up after HCD's review. But again, we're trying to delimit height, setbacks, lot coverage, floor area ratio. So if we are, that, that will be floor area ratio of commercial. So if we are limiting or requiring commercial space here, we should talk about that. The amount of open space per dwelling unit. So if people need patios or common open space, like a bocce ball court or a tot lot or barbecue space or whatever it's going to be, and the amount of parking spaces per unit. So I don't know if someone wants to kick it off.
Chair Hauser, just briefly, you know, many of these sites that will come up for discussion tonight are located within shopping centers. That's reflective of one of the key community desires in our housing element in general plan update processes, which is to redevelop existing shopping centers to preserve our hillsides, promote infill walkable development, minimize traffic, and so on. However, that's not to say, and the draft housing element does not indicate one way or the other, that these sites, for instance, like the Fairmont Shopping Center site, that the housing element component would necessarily be mixed-use or residential-only. So I would contend that as part of the FAR component of this discussion, it's fair game for the commission to offer its insights on whether it should be a standalone residential building for each site or a mixed-use, and whether that mixed-use would be in the same building or in a separate building in the designated area.
Okay, thank you. You know?
Yeah, I'm willing to jump in, but for helping us visualize, I mean, 50 units per acre, I don't know really what that would look like in terms of if you eliminated requisite open space for setbacks. I mean, what, we could come up with a height requirement of 36 feet? And then is it possible to stick 50 units on this space? Has anybody done any metrics like that?
So we haven't specifically diagrammed the sites or laid them out. What I can tell you is for purposes of this site, being one acre an area, at 50 units per acre allowable density, we actually have to further offset that for HCD with a conservative assumption. So we've handicapped, if you will, that 50 units per acre, which would otherwise be 50 units to 41 units. So that we're, we're not overestimating the housing production. And it does help take into account issues like setbacks, parking, and so on. That 81% adjustment is based on real projects the city of Pacifica has approved in, in recent years, which sort of, the amalgamation of all those taxes, if you will, on site area is that 81%.
Got it. I just didn't want to get into a position where we're effectively limiting the number and getting crossways of our HCD application.
Yeah, certainly, you know, if that was somehow a result from some, you know, direction from the commission after we further analyze it later, we would identify that for you and say, we heard you. However, we're concerned, we can't accomplish the stated number of units because of such and such reason.
Would it be helpful to the commissioners if we ask Mr. Murdock to go through the lot coverage setbacks and parking standards that are currently being used in our zoning? Is that a helpful piece of information?
Sure.
Maybe we start there.
Sure. So I would say by and large, again, these development standards are not set up for higher-density housing projects. But in most zoning districts, there's a 15-foot front setback, a five-foot side setback, and somewhere between 15 and 20-foot rear setback. So 15, five and five, and then 20, let's say, in the rear. The citywide height limit currently, except for agricultural districts, is 35 feet in the zoning. In the general plan and Sharp Park Specific Plan, there was discussion and expectation that heights would go between 45 and 55 feet in some instances, generally corresponding to those 30, 40, and 50 dwelling unit per acre land use densities that were approved in those documents. However, the current height limit in the zoning is 35 feet. So you can see already there's an inconsistency where we likely will need to increase the height to something over 35 to accommodate those higher densities. The exception that I mentioned, you know, everywhere but agriculture, strangely, the agricultural zoning district actually allows 36 feet of height, but doesn't allow a particularly intensive type of development. So maybe that was intended for barns or other types of agricultural structures, not primarily housing. As far as off-street parking, it's a little more complicated. We're really not talking about single-family residences. So for multifamily, that standard varies based on the bedroom count of the dwelling in it. So I will pull up that table here momentarily for you. So for multifamily housing, a studio unit currently requires one parking space. A one-bedroom unit, one and a half parking spaces. And two or more bedrooms, two spaces. And then there's a guest parking requirement of one space for each four units.
For each how many units?
Four units. So hopefully that gives you a frame of reference for what the current zoning standards are. And you can perhaps imagine how they could present some challenges to achieving the densities that we need while also trying to make, you know, desirable, well-designed projects.
Can we put the slide back up for Fairmont? Thank you.
For staff, a quick question. We keep talking about the number of units and I personally would be more interested in seeing a mixture of units. I don't want to see somebody come in and build 8 million studio apartments. Or by the same token, I don't want to see somebody come in and build 8 million five-bedroom apartments. How is it that through these standards, we can best try to encourage a mixture?
That's a, that's an interesting question because zoning standards typically don't get into prescribing bedroom counts, but I would argue that it's within the city's police power to do so. I think one way that you can influence that is by ensuring that you give enough height and you don't have overly burdensome setbacks, so that there's enough building to accommodate more than a studio, for instance. If you overly constrain height, floor area ratio, setbacks, you are essentially requiring smaller unit sizes. And so not necessarily to say it would be a studio versus a one-bedroom, but it becomes progressively more difficult to have larger bedroom counts and square footage for units and thus a variety of unit types, the more constrained those other development standards are. So we can explore, you know, whether and how to prescribe bedroom counts, if that's of interest to the commission. But I would suggest in the first instance to think about giving enough flexibility and room to design varieties of, of unit types.
Can you tell us what are the typical square footage of each of those three types of units? A studio, one bedroom, and a two-bedroom?
I don't know if I could offhand. I mean, I've seen them range from relatively small, like, you know, 400 to 500 square feet, up to 1,800 square feet, 2,000 square feet, in some cases more for multifamily units. And it really depends on the project type, what level of the market it's trying to, to target in terms of price point. And we've, we've typically seen higher price point developments in Pacifica in recent years, which has, I think, skewed most of those units on the larger side.
How many parking spots fit on one acre?
Get my trusty calculator here, so. You know, it's hard for me to say specifically because you do need drive aisle area for maneuvering and back out. But the maximum, under our current parking standard, that I think you could expect is around 250 parking spaces on a flat surface parking lot of one acre in size. Taking out, you know, probably 30 to 50% of that area for maneuvering, you probably are in the, you know, 100 to 150 range maximum is my sense.
So in this instance, we wouldn't need to have all studio apartments. We could actually have some diversity of the sizes of the units available if we had parking underneath and residences above.
Sure. I think there are a variety of ways to design the off-street parking facilities. The least expensive for the developer certainly being a surface parking area, which might affect the intensity of development that can occur, as well as the built form and the aesthetics of that project. Structured parking or, you know, below-ground parking become progressively more expensive, but they can give you greater flexibility in terms of how you utilize the site and what the above-ground built area looks like.
And does staff have an opinion as to whether it's good to have parking visible from the street or whether it's better to have it behind or obscured by the structures?
Sure. I think that's a subjective design preference. I would say probably most people in the urban planning and design field would suggest against having parking visible from the street and would rather have sufficient landscaped and well-designed building area be the public view and realm that's visible from the street and the sidewalk and minimize the access points for parking from the street by strategically placing driveways and maximizing their utilization off of the primary viewable area and then having parking setback behind or, you know, below.
Thank you.
Can I, I'm going to make a suggestion, and this is just my own thought on parking, because I feel like for almost every, every one of the sites we're going to look at for residential parking, that I think we should just continue to implement the amount of parking that's required in the Pacifica code, which is what Mr. Murdock read, which is once you get to two bedrooms, it's two dedicated spaces and one to four guest parking spaces. So for every four homes, you have a guest parking space. The nuance there is that the state government code for density bonus allows folks that build affordable housing to reduce the amount of parking. There's a subdivision P that allows you to reduce parking beyond what we'll have in our municipal code. And I think if folks build enough affordable housing, then they can reduce the parking. That my, my feeling is that probably is the same for all the multifamily.
Yeah, and I think the potential exists that an increasing number of projects in Pacifica are likely to, the developers of those projects are likely to invoke the density bonus law from the state because it gives them great flexibility to request waivers from zoning standards, including exceeding height limits, floor area ratio limits, exceeding setbacks, providing less parking. All of those help them construct more housing and make more money, but in many cases, provide affordable housing at a lower cost. And so it's a trade-off that the state legislature has said local governments must make if certain affordability criteria within a project are met. And almost by default, some projects will meet those criteria given our 15% below-market rate inclusionary zoning requirement. And so sort of conceptually, Chair Hauser's pointed out parking, but with any of these standards, don't expect that it's a line in the sand that no one can cross. These are standards that we're setting up with the best intention to achieve the types of projects we want. But we will not reasonably expect that every one of these will be applied to every project, particularly in instances where the density bonus will be invoked by, by an applicant.
Thank you.
Related to parking, and we likely won't get into this tonight, I'm guessing, but I think we also need to consider that a lot of the sites we're looking at may end up being mixed-use. So, and right now, I don't, well, we may, right now, since mixed-use is a new land use designation for the city, we haven't had the opportunity to really go into depth on what parking requirements are for mixed-use. So I think at some point, we should talk about that.
Agree.
Chair Hauser, I just want to clarify, it's entirely true what Commissioner Berman said about mixed-use at these densities. The city has for a long time had mixed-use, up to 22 units per acre. And I will say, in my experience reviewing those projects here for a number of years, it's very challenging, primarily because of our commercial parking requirements, to achieve enough off-street parking to meet the zoning requirements and design desirable projects that have enough commercial area to satisfy our community desire for that and to also provide housing. And so, you know, part of the function of that is we've had very small, constrained, difficult-to-design sites. At a fundamental level, if you get small enough, it's just hard to fit all the pieces together. The good news is most of these sites are much larger. But the concept and the planning challenge remains that we may want a lot of parking for the commercial and a lot of parking for the residential and not have monstrosities of buildings in our community. But it's really difficult to, to square all of those and to reconcile them together. And we do need to spend time, probably as part of the Phase Two process, to really drill down on what that balance is for higher-density mixed-use projects because our zoning certainly doesn't have that set up by default right now.
I agree, and I'd prefer to not get into it yet because I, I think going through each of the sites without that granular detail makes sense. But the second round, I think we should have some specific discussions on it.
I, I agree. Commissioner Berman, I wonder if as a baseline, we start with the parking ratios that we approved with the Sharp Park Specific Plan in Table 4.4, which went through each use and had that level of scrutiny for both the MUN and MUC since we're looking at similar densities.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
In general, last time we looked at Fairmont Shopping Center, we concluded it had an excessive amount of parking for its current use. It seems like our parking standards call for too much parking and part of the reason housing hasn't been built is they're, the parking standards are too luxurious. So I guess I, my preference would be to, to show or to use a higher density with less parking, especially considering. less parking, especially considering, as I mentioned earlier, there's more electric cargo bikes and the possibility of many more mini-cars coming into the mix of vehicles. I think we've overbuilt parking in general in the city, and we need less per unit.
I, I agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Godwin, and I think that the Sharp Park Specific Plan parking ratio that we implemented there reduced it beyond what's currently at Fairmont Shopping Center and in the rest of the city.
And quite happy about that. I think that's the direction we ought to go.
Well, and I wonder, to your point, if there's any benefit to potentially exploring that by providing additional bicycle parking, especially e-bike and maybe charging, that we could even further reduce that ratio as an objective standard within reason?
I think so. Both e-chargers, I know the city has a task force on that, and I also think there's gonna be a lot more electric bikes, it'll need some level of somewhat different chargers. I haven't fully fleshed out what I think's a good recommendation, but I think that's, that's coming in the not-too-distant future in large amounts.
I just want to tread lightly, because I think there's certain areas in Pacifica where parked cars are just inundated, and I think there needs to be more parking in certain areas, or at least more creative parking. And then there's other areas of Pacifica where parking isn't quite an issue. But I know, yeah, I, I don't know the solution to it, I just know that we'll need to talk about it.
If I could, this is a highly residential site. You know, starting, I mean, I understand we're really not getting into parking right now, but as we look at these sites and we look at the surrounding areas, height comes to mind, and the fact that these commercial buildings are not very tall, and they're surrounded by homes that are at most two stories. So, looking at, you know, park, inundating these folks, they're inundating this quiet neighborhood, if we cut parking too much, that's something to consider. But moving beyond parking and just going into height, I'm, I really wouldn't want to see, I, I understand try, the attempt to reach this density per acre, but I cannot envision what that would look like while not completely distorting this site. If we're talking about kind of trying to bring in development that looks appropriate and not monstrosities, how do we accomplish this level of density in an area like this? There are some of the other sites that, that will come up later on, and they do have commercial buildings and surrounding townhomes that are taller than this specific site. But I just wonder how we accomplish both.
You don't want to have a window over the top of Safeway's roof?
So, I wonder if we kind of, I, I think, if I'm gonna summarize, that we probably have enough for parking to give you guys the baseline of like, let's use the code amount for residential, understanding that state density bonus law has subdivision P. And then let's use Table 4.4 of the recently approved Sharp Park Specific Plan to guide commercial, that'll be the baseline, and then we'll have to really reexamine that in specific detail when this comes back. But is that enough direction on parking at this point?
Chair Hauser, yes, that's enough direction for parking.
Okay.
We're talking about that for all sites unless we specifically say something?
For all sites unless explicitly. So, then, going back to Fairmont Shopping Center, specifically, so maybe, yeah, I mean, does anyone have?
To clarify setbacks, that we're calling the front of this the Hickey-facing side of this property? Just based on the address?
Well, I, I guess, it really depends, I mean, if we could just speak about which frontage you're referring to, I don't know if...
Well, I just, if we go by your existing standards of a front setback, a side setback, and a rear setback, we have to define which sides those are? And I don't know if that would apply to the whole property or just this corner polygon, because it's part of the same parcel, am I correct?
It currently is, yeah. And I just, the, part of the difficulty in me answering your question simply is, under our, our zoning definitions, the gateway-drive frontage would be the front property line, even though you may think of Hickey being more prominent, broader, being the front.
Well, just the address you've listed is on Hickey.
That's right, that's the, one of the addresses for this shopping center. We don't have a, I think it's actually the address potentially for the, the Firestone portion of the property itself.
Got it, so we're calling the front Gateway Drive?
I, I think...
You can call it whatever you want, because we can define that for this site in terms of the standards and, and write it in such a way that you get the outcome that you want, whether or not, you know, one street or the other's the front.
Sure, as, as a group, we, we could choose one, right?
We could choose both.
Sure.
As, I mean, we could, we could apply, so this is our time to be specific. So, we could apply the same or smaller setback to both frontages, it does not have to match the city code.
Yeah, I get that, I just, if we're gonna discuss which one we want where, define, I don't...
And Chair Hauser, if I may, to Commissioner Devine's comment earlier about height and scale for this particular location, that may be an opportunity to explore setbacks above the ground floor that might help balance that concern about a billing, building being too tall or too massive for this location. Or it could mean that overall, there's just not an appetite for height above, you know, a given number of feet, for example. But that is one of the design options that could impart, you know, step back from, you know, Hickey or Gateway or both, to help balance that and put greater heights interior to the center, rather than closer to the adjacent land.
If we set an objective height standard for the polygon at Hickey Boulevard, if they invoke, if a developer invokes the builder's density bonus, are they allowed to then just void our set height? Like, I'm, I'm thinking of like the Sloate Garden Center project, if you're familiar with it?
Yes, I've seen the, the media coverage of that concept. Yes, the simple answer is that under the right circumstances, a developer could completely null and void a height zoning limitation, for example. We would still have the opportunity to perform environmental review, so if that height caused an adverse environmental impact, we would have the ability to mitigate it. However, we wouldn't, as a matter of zoning, be able to impose the height limit if the project was a qualifying affordable housing development.
Would we still be able to do stepped setbacks that they can't get around as they exceed our height limits?
It's, it's, it's a law that's written in favor of developers that provide affordable housing. It's hard to speculate in those hypotheticals. There are supposed to be a, a limit on the number of zoning incentives you get based on proportion of affordable housing, but there's a point at which unlimited concessions can be invoked, and so, what that means for a particular zoning standard or set of standards, it's hard for me to answer, sitting here today. It could mean a good deal of our zoning requirements are no longer applicable to a given project that provides a sufficient amount of affordable housing.
Well, in terms of the relationship between height and setbacks, the higher you go, as you go back, I'd like it to look like a set of stairs, myself personally, so as you're driving down the street, what you see doesn't seem to be this giant face of a building.
I believe we did something similar in the Sharp Park Specific Plan.
Yeah, setbacks.
Yeah.
So, my personal vision for this is that Hickey is the frontage.
Agreed.
And that we have ground-floor commercial that's at least 25 feet deep on the ground floor.
On Hickey.
On Hickey, just on Hickey, and an appropriate, you know, treatment of the corner, so that it doesn't look truncated, that there are setbacks. But, with a 50 dwelling unit per acre density, I don't know how we do that in less than five stories, which seems absurd, so.
And what do we do about making sure we have enough loading zones to service those commercial properties?
Like loading docks?
Not docks, yellow zones, so that we don't have trucks double parking in the street and making all the neighbors angry.
I think we should require a dedicated parking that's oversized and time-limited for loading with parking.
Okay, thank you.
That would have to be in the interior, right, on the interior of this, to the north and east, not on Hickey or Gateway?
Yes, but since the property owner owns all of it, I wonder if they could grant themselves an easement on another parking space internal to the shopping, like, you know, there's, this one might be able to solve their own parking problems outside of the polygon.
Is there any reason on this project to have like a 20-foot back setback? When the, when the back of this is now into the shopping center, does it make sense to give up some space there? Seems like it would be to me. I'd rather see, you know, more, more front setback and, and less rear setback.
I am personally of the opinion that when you're trying to activate the street, you want a strong street wall and to have a pedestrian scale, so that you actually want to have a minimum setback on the street. And then, yeah, on the like interior, you'd want to have bigger setbacks, but, you know, I think it's really gonna, everything else is setback, so this is, I don't think there's any way to cut this where it doesn't feel like it kind of sticks out.
I would agree, and that's the most painful part, and I think we're gonna find that in a lot of these sites.
Yeah.
And I understand that the community absolutely feels the same way, and that is the biggest challenge in, in these sites.
Well, let, let me ask a question of staff. Since you're going to do a sequel-level document, assuming that we do thorough and thoughtful development standards, objective development standards, I mean, would it be wise to potentially look at some additional sites in case some of these don't develop as we, as we would hope?
Sure, it, it's really important for us, if there are additional sites, the commission thinks might be added as backups or Plan B, depending on what HCD's comments might be, or what the City Council's final decision will be on the sites list, given that we have a pretty sizable buffer, we may not necessarily need every site in the capacity that we've identified currently, or we may need to replace sites, depending on HCD's comments. It'd be great to, to hear if there are other sites that might be part of this discussion in a future meeting, because, you know, we need to get to them as, again, backups or additional add-ons if we want to increase the buffer, you know, there are a lot of options still.
If we're thinking about the use and thinking about the commercial, it seems to me that if you have commercial on the ground floor, you would want it closer to the sidewalk so that people can window shop. And that's a little bit in conflict with our desire to have it set back a little for more, a more appealing.
You know, you could step back the residential and keep the commercial, and maybe the, like, maybe you have the commercial, have a very, you know, strong street wall and have like a smaller setback, and then require a step back of the residential above, which helps with that daylight lane that we focused on in the Sharp Park Specific Plan.
And then in terms of the outside space required for the residential units, do we currently allow roof decks to count for that space?
Yes.
So, we could do the same thing over the commercial, for example?
Adding on to setbacks, first a question and then a comment. Commissioner Godwin, were you talking about a rear setback, so like interior to, like, if we looked at the polygon and the rear setback were adjacent to the commercial parking lot, were you suggesting that we minimize the setback there?
I was.
And then, okay, so, I would agree with that, I feel like at that location, there could be less of a setback, but clarification question, so when we're talking about setback, we're talking about setbacks from the polygons, not necessarily like the property line, correct?
I, I think that is the type of feedback we can take. You know, you can imagine this as a property line and design it that way, or just think of it as a part of the broader center, but just being clear in what the intent is will allow us to create the appropriate standard.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Is it related to setbacks?
Yeah, I was gonna ask if we could create a setback for pedestrian access on all sides, including curb cuts and whatever, but if you're gonna create a misuse space, yeah, no, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think we could have a much smaller setback on the interior of the shopping center for, for this site. And then also, my comment, several different jurisdictions have, and I think it's called like a key corner, for especially commercial lots, where it's at a prominent intersection, where that corner, so the corner of Gateway and Hickey Boulevard would have kind of its own designation itself. So, if you could imagine, so like, Mountain View does this, for example, in certain locations. If you can imagine, the building wouldn't come to a point at the corner, there would be some additional space, almost like a setback for that corner, and I think they call it like a key corner. I think this property would be one that we could consider a little more space at the corner, and that could be for planting, it could be for outdoor seating, if there's a restaurant there. I think it's a better feel rounding the corner of kind of a active space versus just an actual pointy corner of a building. And then there's a couple other properties where I think that might be applicable, in my opinion.
I support the key corner.
Yeah, I love that idea.
Yeah, I agree, that sounds like...
So, I'm, I'm gonna take a stab at this, just because we're almost at 10 o'clock around the first site. So, I think ground-floor retail, I took a quick Google Earth measurement, and it's like 200 linear feet, so at 25-foot depth, that's 5,000 square feet of commercial is the minimum requirement. The parking standards we talked about, the key corner, I would propose a 5 to 10-foot setback range on Hickey, a 15-foot setback range on Fairmont, because I think that's where the residential is, and we need to not feel so tall over there. And then I would propose a 5-foot setback from each of the two kind of internal parking lot areas. And as Commissioner Berman mentioned, I like the idea of making the polygon the property line, because I think we're all working on the same diagram.
Just for like the context of how we talk about it?
Yeah, exactly. Is that, does any of that sound good objectionable? Okay. Okay. So, then, we got parking, we got FAR, we got setbacks. What's the lot coverage that we typically require, Chris, Mr. Murdock?
Again, recognizing that our standards aren't set up for this type of development, let me give you the most comparable standard that we have currently in our zoning. It's for the R3 multifamily residential district, which currently only allows up to 21 units per acre, for a frame of reference in terms of the density and intensity, and that allows up to 60% maximum lot coverage.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go higher than that. I would, I would maybe ask staff to come back with a recommendation that accommodates the other development standards, which I think we'll try to give you. Is that, does that work?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I'm looking at a city of Brisbane, and, let's see here, I don't think Gilroy really gets into it, but they bring it up to 70%, which says reference.
So, maybe we start at 70 as the baseline, and staff can analyze if that's sufficient or insufficient.
Including the setbacks and the space for parking that we've talked about?
Right. And then, as far as open space per dwelling unit, I think we did a good job in the Sharp Park Specific Plan again, where we said it was 100, it just had it open. It was like 100 square feet per dwelling unit required, so on 50 units, that's 5,000 square feet of open space. And it could either be common, private, or a combination. Is that, it's pretty low compared to other cities, but I think at this density, that's probably where we're gonna be.
Is what we did for the Sharp Park Specific Plan designate that it could be flexible in being common, so then the developer could make, could take all of that and make the 5,000 square feet just common?
It says 100 square feet per unit, up to 50% of which can be combined as common open space, which can be at any level.
So, up to 50% of it?
Yeah.
Okay, I, because I, I think there is a benefit to each unit having some open space.
Yeah.
So is that maybe up to seventy-five percent could be common? So that would be at least twenty-five square feet per unit in that instance?
I think you need to have a minimum of six by ten for private open space, or it's really not usable. It's like a going into a closet.
Twenty-five feet is eight by three.
Right.
I couldn't fit there right now.
So maybe that's where we, like, maybe the minimum open space is private, six, six by ten, and then.
So that would run counter to the Sharp Park standard, for example, where up to fifty percent can be used, so.
Maybe we could ask staff to think about that and come back to us with a suggestion?
Yeah. I'm personally in favor of raising the height limit and providing more open space, but.
Should we balcony at that point?
I don't think that's the majority opinion.
What if we did a hundred and twenty square feet instead of a hundred, and it would be the sixty, because we, we had tried to get more in the Sharp Park specific plan. I believe Diet and Batia had said in these particular small lots, we're not gonna be able to. These are gonna be much bigger lots. So we could, I mean, we could even call it two hundred and say it's a hundred and a hundred, which would be consistent with a lot of cities. And much less than the current four hundred that's required under our code.
And when, when we talk about parking and open space, that also is developed within the polygon and not within the greater lot, if they're not using other parking into offset? Okay.
Could they do it through CCNRs, though? Like, for this site, it's one common property owner?
I think they could have a maintenance agreement.
So I think the presumption should be that for these standards, they'll be accommodated on-site. There are unique opportunities where maybe circumstances permit to have shared parking. Our zoning currently allows that, and so unless the commission proposes to disallow that, that would remain an option. There typically are limits as to the distance from the use being served, how far it can be, but there is some flexibility.
I just wanted to make sure, because we're eliminating forty-five parking spaces, and then we're gonna say, oh, yeah, go add these seventeen parking spaces to the rest that we haven't already eliminated.
Right.
Yeah.
It's, it's in this polygon, preserving this much parking.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I think especially the guest parking spaces, they could do through some sort of maintenance agreement with a shopping center. You might establish some residential ones there, but.
So I wasn't clear on the commission's direction about the square footage of, of open space and the percentage that can be combined?
I was gonna come back to it. Are we, do we want to say a hundred and a hundred?
Well, I was fine with the one-twenty, fifty, fifty.
One-twenty, fifty, fifty?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay, and minimum dimensions of six by ten?
I like the two hundred.
You like the two hundred?
Yes.
I kind of like the two hundred, too.
I lean more towards the two hundred, but I.
Okay, three, three?
I, I wouldn't be opposed to two hundred.
I wouldn't either, but are we adding space we don't have?
Yes. Yeah, essentially.
Well, I guess, I mean, and this could apply maybe going forward, just looking at this kind of like an equation, we can't make all six of these hard variables. I think we'll have to leave staff with some flexibility on some variables, or else it's what we come out, uh, what we direct tonight is just not gonna be achievable.
You're gonna have to give on something.
We have to give on something, and, and maybe to make our evening more efficient, we kind of cut our losses and determine what we give to staff for them to figure it out.
I concede on height and lot coverage and hold ground on design and setbacks and.
I think, I think we start with, like, the same way we did the parking. We have the
hundred and hundred be the goal, and if staff comes back and says it's just not gonna fit, then we know it's just not gonna fit. But since we haven't analyzed this and we all want more open space, and again, two hundred square feet is like not that much open space. Like, I think we should start there.
And I think it's important, too, to ask staff to give us a spitball idea about are we trying to put so many constraints around something nobody's ever gonna build it?
Or just achieve density and.
That, that's certainly, um, a consideration, right? Right now, I think we're trying to understand the aspirational components, get a sense of relative priority of these standards for a given site. So let's just say a site backed up to a, a big hill, for example, maybe height's less important there, because there's not adjacent neighbors that would be impacted. But as Commissioner Devine pointed out, there are circumstances where nearby residences maybe are a sensitive consideration for height in a particular location. And so getting that sense of relative priority and where maybe you're firmer on one but can give some ground on another, that'll allow us to go back and do our work, um, weighing these different issues to try to get the right outcomes for these sites.
So I think.
So all that's left is height, right?
All that's left, yeah, so we're gonna be two, we're, the two hundred is the goal, but the one hundred, a hundred, you'll let us know, and we're, we're down to height. I think this is gonna be the hardest one on every single site.
Is it achievable, thirty-five feet? I don't, there's no way, no.
So I think.
Even with a setback?
With a setback? No, I, so the question that I, so thirty-five feet is our current Pacifica height limit, except in the Sharp Park specific plan area, except that hasn't yet been adopted by the Coastal Commission. Um, thirty-five feet equates to three stories.
Sure.
So I think the question is how many stories? While I think you're not gonna be able to achieve it in five, I would be more in favor of four.
Is one of those parking, though? So are we, when we're saying stories, are we saying total stories?
We have to leave that to the developer who, I think we have to leave that to the developer to design.
I, I don't disagree with that, but what I'm trying to think of in my mind is, are we talking about?
Maximum height of the building.
Oh, it's from ground level.
Okay.
Right, yes. Does that answer the question?
That answers it sufficiently.
Okay.
And Chair, I think one of the, the key factors in my mind, if I were to think about this challenge, is where height may be a particularly sensitive standard, that the addition of a ground floor commercial area, you know, takes away height that could otherwise be reduced for a building. And so that's a policy trade-off the commission will need to make in, in each specific site. You know, is it so important to have ground floor commercial at the expense of a taller building, or a smaller building with much smaller units? And so you begin to push the envelope one way or another, and the outcomes can begin, become very different for some of these buildings.
My vote, again, is with Amazon Prime and stuff, that I am not sure the retail demand is gonna be there. I mean, I understand the motivation to mixed-use retail, but I think the trend on retail in the United States is down, not up.
But I think people need a place to eat.
And to gather.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there, there needs to be some gathering places, but, yeah, I just think there's not a lot of people wanting to start a retail store.
I think I like to go shopping more than you do, Commissioner Godwin.
Probably true. Everybody shops more than me.
And Chair, I would propose it's not necessarily all or nothing. I mean, maybe it's at least one-third of the ground floor area is commercial, or, you know, some, you know, proportion that achieves the balance to have some area to gather or to dine and add vibrancy, but maybe reflects that we do want to make up some of the area or height with parking or with residential uses to respond to some other factor.
I mean, I don't think five thousand square feet out of an acre is like a lot of ground floor retail, but.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think that's an appropriate amount.
How many square feet is an acre?
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I think that, um, if we're working off, you know, the thirty-five feet, and that's three stories, right, four, four stories is a compromise. Five stories on this site, I, I just think is a no-go. I, I can't imagine, um, I think it would be very challenging for this community to accept this one corner, and this entire community becomes like, for them, a skyscraper, right? Um, I would be comfortable with four stories.
What if we, um, limited the commercial, as Director Murdock mentioned, and then focused it at like the key corner?
Limited, like, you mean, um, did less commercial?
Less commercial, so there would be some residential on ground, on the ground floor, both at Hickey and Gateway.
Well, what is that, buy your back two, two apartments?
Twenty-five hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Chair, it would help to understand more, Commissioner Devine was speaking about stories, but how that translates into feet, if that's possible, would, would help as well, because the story heights can be variable, you know, from maybe nine or ten feet to twelve or fifteen feet, depending on the use and the desired, you know, architectural component.
So in the Sharp Park specific plan, we had established forty-five feet for four stories and fifty-five feet for five stories. The forty-five feet was really a sixteen to thirty dwelling unit an acre height, and the fifty-five feet was a thirty to fifty acre height. And I know that we have some sixty acre sites coming. So I agree with you. I don't think five stories is the right height. I also don't know how to, like.
Understood. I, I mean, I can, I empathize, obviously.
Why don't we start with four stories and potentially look at additional sites to add? And I actually have a list of some, whenever the appropriate time is for staff, that I think we should look at adding.
So forty-five feet?
Why don't we start with forty-five feet on this one, and staff can let us know if we've created an issue? Does everyone feel good about that, Mr. Godwin? Okay. Okay. So I think that concludes site one. Nine more. Um.
And this is Pacific Manor Shopping Center, address four-four-zero Manor Place. Um, the total site area shown here is two-point-two-eight acres. Um, and the, for housing is in the blue shading, it's one-point-five-six acres. Um, density proposed here is sixty dwelling units per acre.
Thank you. I personally think this is one of the hardest sites in the whole housing element.
I hate to bring up height again. Really a challenging site. This entire commercial area is one story.
Well, if you go up, you get an ocean view.
What?
And then you block everyone else's ocean view. Exactly.
What, what is the size of the actual lot?
It's one-point-five-six acres.
So this is a separate lot? It's not this whole big shopping center, this whole block?
It's a portion of a lot that's shaped like a C and a portion of a rectangular lot. And actually, one of the comments that I had here, um, is that I think we should bring the polyline south. I know you're trying to get an extra row of parking, but I think, I think it complicates it less if you take that whole central APN.
Having, uh, lived on the alley behind this Safeway, I think parking is deceptively tough in this neighborhood, unless you walk two blocks down Palmetto to get, to get away.
I was actually curious how this is going to affect all the other retail spaces there, and what that is going to. I mean, this is sixty percent of the lot. How, how is that going to affect these commercials, these businesses?
I'm gonna just reiterate that I think this is probably the, one of the hardest sites in the housing element.
I was thinking of the loading and the utilities with the freeway right there, the underpass.
I mean, people are going, like, jetting off the freeway onto Palmetto there, so I don't think you can have access off of Palmetto. I think you'd have to have access from Bill Drake or through the parking lot. Where are vehicles gonna stage during construction? Where are materials gonna stage?
That's for them to figure out. But, yeah.
But it's gonna affect all these people.
Well, how about traffic at that intersection that's already a problem?
It's impossible to pull out of there.
It's really difficult.
Actually, in, in my truck, I cannot make the turn onto Palmetto there without taking half of the oncoming traffic lanes. You have to really time it.
Yeah.
Or go the other direction.
Mr. Murdock, can I throw out several other sites that we could potentially study?
Sure, happy to take note right now.
Can we come back to this one?
Yeah, I was gonna say that as well.
Just power through. We gotta get to them.
We obviously take tests all differently.
Okay. So I'm gonna throw out just really quickly several additional sites that I think we maybe could study. Um, so eight oh one Oceana Boulevard, which is where Pavilion of Flowers is.
Could, could you repeat that, please?
Eight oh one Oceana Boulevard, which is one-point-one acres. Um, Skyline Boulevard at King, which is, um, California-owned, it's the water tank site. Seven-twenty-five Odstad Boulevard, which is two-point-one acres. And I know that there had been an assisted living facility that had been entitled there, but I don't think they ever built it, and I think the entitlement expired. Um, seven-thirty Sharp Park Road, which is a, a church that has a humongous asphalt parking lot. Ramala Plaza, which is six-eighty-one Manor Drive and two-four-eight-zero Skyline together, which make about an acre. And then three-forty Waterford Street, um, both the vacant lot there and the car wash together, which makes, um, which makes about half an acre.
Wasn't there a development plan on Waterford?
There was.
About a year ago.
I was here for that one.
Yeah, I think this would have put it in, I mean, it's not on the housing element, and it's not in our list of existing inventory. And I think that car wash is underutilized. So, I mean, if it's between this and some of the really, you know, the idea of having five stories versus three or four stories, I think maybe we spread it out a little bit.
That's out. I mean, when I look at this site, if this has to be a considered site, I'm like, it, it cannot take up sixty percent of that parking lot. That is unreasonable and not feasible for this, for, for, for any of the community members coming in and out of this area. And, I mean, height, what, what do you, Commissioner Ferguson?
Oh, no, I was gonna say this, instead of like the self-storage units on Palmetto right down the street. Seems like one of them is more utilized and more community-important than the other, but.
Yeah. I mean, there are three-story, I'm looking at Google Earth, there's three-story buildings and two-story buildings across Bill Drake.
Right.
The idea of a five-story building blocking Safeway or a four-story building, I mean, blocking, I mean, these are all of the restaurants that everyone uses. It's like Green Enchilada, Red Eye, Pizano's.
Roslyn itself takes up fifty percent of that parking lot. People patronizing that business, you know?
So, forgive me, go ahead, please.
And to add to that, I think there's a benefit to being able to see these storefronts from, um, well, not necessarily Highway One, but from Oceana and, um, I don't know, from the roadway, instead of it being hidden behind housing development.
Couldn't you use signage, though, to defer some of that adverse impact?
I don't know if that could be a requirement, I mean.
It's up to the owner.
Yeah, it, the developer would determine whether or not they add it.
But it's their commercial property and their commercial rents that they're gonna be supporting, so it'd be in their interest to design with that in mind.
Well, I, yeah, yeah.
Chair, I was just going to suggest to the commission that, uh, while it's important that we look at the sites that have been identified, uh, in the diagram, and do our best to hopefully come up with objective standards for those, um, I think the reality is a number of these sites might redevelop with a broader proportion of these shopping center locations.
Got it.
And so we can't guarantee that, but I think the reality is that it has the potential to occur. And so some of these site challenges might be minimized and addressed by a broader redevelopment, that the opportunity to build housing like this might present, when, when the economics are drastically different than they are currently. Uh, the other idea I wanted to offer to the commission is to think about the Safeway site in Millbrae. That's a similar type of configuration here, where it's largely built above the parking lot, but there's parking underneath of the Safeway. And so when you think about it, blocking the Safeway, potential exists that Safeway might want to reinvest and construct a new grocery store, for example, that actually doesn't take up quite as much of the ground floor as it might appear from the site diagram alone. So there are many different ways that a site like this could take shape, but the commission's task is to do its best to come up with reasonable standards that provide an outer bound of what that might be, and then allow some flexibility for a creative architect to design the right project.
So for clarity, this polygon isn't the only place you can put housing on this site? So I thought that we were limited to this, that this is the only place that's possible.
Yeah, then do we get rid of the polygon?
No, no, no. So I, I think the polygon, so I, I think we need to be careful here. Um, the polygon is. The polygon is where developers will be able to put housing by right. And I think by limiting it to here, if the rest of the, you know, property wants to redevelop, then you get to go through a bigger process, which I think would be a benefit to this city anyway.
I agree. I just want, I mean, we're implying that and we're assuming that and wondering if the polygon then needs to be rethought.
I think the polygon needs to be rethought.
Or, or we look at it and require that the entire ground floor is commercial. But then, you know, there's, then this is kind of, not restricting, but we're saying that housing must go here, whereas perhaps master planning this entire block could yield a better design. I don't know.
It makes a lot more sense to me than having a giant building in the parking lot of Safeway.
Yeah.
I agree. I mean, I think you either take out the entire shopping center and move the retail somewhere else before you leave it alone.
I think my concern with that is that if we put the entire polygon in by state law, a developer could come in and use a concession and unlimited waivers to say, "I'm not gonna put any commercial here."
And put two thousand units there.
And put, yeah.
Then do we move the polygon?
I think my personal preference is to keep the polygon and call it three acres or, sorry, three stories or four if it's ground floor commercial.
So just another factor to consider is that one of the areas that staff considered when trying to identify the housing sites is the underlying ownership. So when you look at the inline shopping center as it exists today at Pacific Manor, there are several separate property owners, the way the parcels have been subdivided. And so, the prospect of putting a site with, let's say, a half a dozen or more separate owners as a housing element site significantly complicates the ability to get them to agree to do a coordinated redevelopment plan, which probably renders the site inclusive of that building ineligible or inappropriate for the housing element. This portion of the parking lot is a single parcel, which we believe is managed by the association, and so it would be a different process to think about coordinating the redevelopment action associated with that. Moreover, it doesn't require any individual owner to give up his or her business, you know, in the course of allowing housing to be built there. So it's, it's a different dynamic. I agree that master planning the entire shopping center would have great value. There are some practical challenges, given the way it's been subdivided, to expect that to be a viable site for purposes of the housing element.
But if we have a commercial requirement for the ground floor, wouldn't they be able to get redone space as part of that?
Yeah, but they don't, but if it's, if they don't want any commercial and the shopping center owners decide that they wanna, you know, do what the bowling alley is doing and cash out, then we would lose all of this commercial, which I also don't think is a good option. I think we have to preserve our commercial.
Yeah, but just from taking this and putting that on there and then you turn it sideways like that, I like that shape much better.
For those who cannot see Commissioner Wright's computer, he is talking about rotating the polygon to include Pizano's and the wash place and the talk area.
Does, related to what Director Murdock was talking about with the different property owners, does HCD flag that? If you choose a site and designate housing that maybe three different property owners own property, does HCD allow that?
It's, there's nothing with multiple property ownership that I'm aware of that would disallow a site, but we need to do a reasonable analysis of constraints that are likely to affect the potential of a redevelopment to occur. And multiple property ownership, in my mind, is a pretty significant barrier to likely redevelopment of a site. And so, we've tried to avoid including sites that have multiple property owners that would complicate potential redevelopment and construction of housing.
Would we rather have lower and wider or smaller and taller?
Well, it's a hundred units, this site, so...
Seventy-six.
There's no smaller.
Yeah. I mean, I think also with HCD currently reviewing this draft, I don't think we should change a polygon that's been submitted to them. So, I mean, I think, I think what I'd like to do is just go down, maybe we start with Commissioner Wright, and we just go down and say what our vision is for height for this polygon. And if there is feedback from HCD that organically opens up an opportunity to change it, then I think we can reexamine.
Here, thirty-five feet.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm kind of a loss at how you'd make this polygon work. I guess you need to put in a parking structure and something, so I'm thinking something higher, fifty feet, maybe. It would look amazingly bad, but I don't know what else you could make.
Yeah, I'd imagine, I'd imagine the parking structure to one side, because you just couldn't eliminate all the parking from the commercial. But I'd just said forty-five feet. I don't know how else you'd get there. I don't know where that seventy-six number comes from that doesn't meet the sixty per acre, but...
And so, all of the, the total unit figures that you see are adjusted by the eighty-one percent factor. So if you were to do the math from left to right for the area in shading, one-point-five-six acres times sixty dwelling units per acre...
Times eighty-one.
Times point-eight-one.
Got it.
Okay.
Mr. Brown? Thirty-five would be preferable, but I, I think it's gonna have to end up going to forty-five. But, so thirty-five or forty-five?
Mr. Divine?
Thirty-five.
Okay. And I'm forty-five. So thirty-five, forty-five, 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 fifty, thirty-five. Could we call it forty-five? Commissioner Godwin? So setbacks, I think we need to keep it fifteen feet off of Palmetto on the front. I'm gonna call Palmetto the front setback.
I'd have gone zero.
You went zero?
Yeah, I just shoved it as hard as I could to Palmetto.
And are we, we're talking with respect to the poly online?
Correct.
Do we wanna keep...
There's, there's no, there's no visitors, there's no pedestrian traffic there. It's almost an industrial feel and just try to create the space on the inside.
Okay.
What was the setback you said?
I said fifteen, but Commissioner Ferguson said zero.
Zero to the sidewalk, not to the street, but...
Like to the back of sidewalk? Okay.
You're talking Palmetto now?
Yes.
Okay.
So as far as the front, you're talking, we're talking Palmetto would be like, okay.
Or five feet, I guess. Zero's ridiculous, but...
I mean, I guess if we're, well, so here's, let's ask a different question for FAR. Do we think that we are going to, with forty-five feet, get ground floor commercial? And where would we want to see it?
It's the only place you have enough commercial in the whole town. Ready?
Sounds good to me.
What are we thinking? Sorry.
Do we want ground floor commercial or not?
I like the idea of maintaining ground floor commercial, but there is a good amount of commercial here. I think most properties, I'm gonna lean towards wanting ground floor commercial, you know? So, yeah, I'll say that.
I think it'd be ideal, but we're looking at an area that, you know, we've got commercial on both of the side streets and along the entire, I guess, back end of the building. If it was a concession, it would be one that I'd be okay with for this site.
Okay. I, I think to complete the feeling of Bill Drake, which is the, the street to the north, I think that there needs to be commercial, and it's technically across mostly from the gas station here, but there's like restaurants and a salon and bar. And so, I think it could help complete that street if you had ground floor commercial on Bill Drake and have it wrap the corner, not a key corner here, because I think...
I agree.
With the traffic, I don't think it's a place that feels safe to be outside.
I agree.
I don't know how people feel about that. No?
I'd be in favor of ground floor commercial, period, but I'd like to have a ten-foot setback on Palmetto to make room for street parking.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Eliminate the sidewalk.
I think you need more than ten feet, then?
Then we could fifteen.
Well, so you'd need a parallel parking spot, and you probably want separated sidewalk.
The idea of stopping there, though, the cars are going fifty miles an hour on the freeway.
Cars are going really fast there.
There, there are opportunities to slow them down there.
Well, okay, here, here's my opinion, just thinking through this. If there is not gonna be commercial, ground floor commercial on Palmetto, then I would say no street parking there. If there is gonna be ground for floor commercial on Palmetto, I would say we could consider street parking there. I liked Commissioner Hauser's idea, idea of designating, what is it?
Bill Drake Way.
Yeah, Bill Drake Way as commercial on that side.
With, with street parking on that side.
With street parking on that side.
So only commercial on that side?
But if it's, if it's not ground floor commercial, what's it gonna be?
Residential, probably.
Does somebody really wanna live on ground floor of Palmetto?
Someone really wanna live in this parking lot? I mean...
People live ground floor of Palmetto already.
I'm sorry.
Yes. I think Commissioner Divine's got a good point. It's people zipping by fifty miles an hour, do you wanna have a two-year-old wandering out of the house? I mean, it seems like a disaster waiting to happen.
I understand we're talking about needs versus wants. I mean, it was, bad joke, but, you know, if a family needed this housing, had access to this housing, it was low-income housing. I don't think they'd be in a position to argue if it was on the ground floor or if there were cars whizzing by. It's not an ideal situation for that family, you know?
It's gonna get built.
You know, I, I mean, again, there's truth in what I said, but I'm, I, we're not talking about this being, you know, the most ideal situation for anyone, per se.
Wouldn't it make more sense to build a parking lot on the bottom floor or a parking, partial parking structure and put the residences above the parking?
Absolutely.
In this particular case, I would think that would be a better design.
Making it ground floor parking.
Yeah.
At grade.
So where do you measure the height from?
But then you get no street appeal for your commercial.
There's a lot of downside.
You could still do...
You could still do street appeal for ground floor parking.
And you could still put commercial on Bill Drake.
And have street parking on Bill Drake. So, okay, I like the, I, so I also like the idea of having ground floor parking and that's kind of like, as I was contemplating this, that's where I ended up as well. I think the question that I have is then how higher, I mean, how higher are we going with this building?
Yeah, 'cause the parking is kind of, there's no units in parking.
But you can dig here, 'cause they dug right over here on the highway.
You can or you can't?
You can't, 'cause they dug where the highway is.
Ground floor submerged parking.
I see what you're saying.
But highway also floods every big storm.
Highway would still be lower, probably.
Probably, yeah, a little.
Okay. So I think what you're hearing, everyone kinda, is that we'd be open to a forty-five-foot height. However, there may be some flexibility because we like to encourage ground floor parking, maybe submerged, maybe not. Subterranean, not submerged.
Could we say parking or commercial? If they chose to go submerged parking, if they could still have the option to do commercial on ground floor?
Yeah, I think we can give them the option to do it, but I think we wanna require it along Bill Drake. I think from a setback standpoint, we would then wanna do the five to ten, the same five to ten feet that we did for Fairmont Shopping Center along Bill Drake. It would be okay having the five-foot and five-foot setbacks on the interior like we did on Fairmont Shopping Center. I think the question that I have is what do we do on that Palmetto setback?
I think if Palmetto has residential, if it were to have residential units on ground floor along Palmetto, I'd want a larger setback, so at least fifteen feet.
With, with a separated sidewalk and street trees to...
Right.
A safe pedestrian experience.
And no, no street parking. That's my thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's a safety thing. I mean, yeah.
Yeah. And I think maybe a wider sidewalk should be installed. And actually, I think a wider sidewalk should also be installed for the Fairmont Shopping Center if we're, I don't wanna go backwards, but since that's on Hickey as well, I think we, I think we should create safe pedestrian experiences.
Are you saying six feet, eight feet?
I think, I think a, a five-foot walk is okay, but I think you need to have a parkway strip that's at least three feet.
Like a land, a landscape strip.
A parkway strip. Okay.
So if you do ground floor parking, what's your setback on Palmetto?
I would say if it were ground floor parking, I would say just like five feet, I'd be comfortable, like pretty close to the back of walk, like five feet off of the back of walk.
Concur.
Yeah.
What's the width of a wheelchair? That's just an awful long run.
So the standard typically is that interior walks on projects need to be four feet and public walks need to be five feet to make ADA.
So they can pass each other?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, FAR, I think, I think what we would do, instead of providing you with an FAR Christian, is maybe we do the same thing, which is the whole width of Bill Drake is twenty-five, but a corner element is fifty feet deep.
The corner, uh...
The corner of Palmetto and, yeah, 'cause there's not gonna be a key.
Yeah, right. Key corner, I, I can't remember if that's what they're called, but I think that's what they're called.
I like it.
But no key corner here.
No key corner here. And then we talked about open space and parking on the last one. Any last lingering ones on this one? Okay. Next, please.
We made it through that one in a half an hour.
Okay.
Brentwood Shopping Center, Oceana and Manor. The proposed density after rezoning is sixty dwelling units per acre. This total site area is seven-point-three acres, and the area assumed for housing is shaded in blue, roughly one acre. Total units is forty-one.
Can I split these two or treat them as one?
Yeah, I think, I think this is split, and I like that it maintained, I mean, I like that it maintained Anderson's, which I think is a staple in the community.
Agreed.
They've been there for decades and decades.
So are we talking about in the south lot, it coming right up to that building? That, we would have to create some sort of walkway or...
Well, remember, we can choose our setbacks. So the polygon is just imagined as a property line.
So that'd be like a zero setback if that remained.
Uh, I think, I think we would choose our setback from the building.
Okay.
You could, you could choose to do a zero setback there, but we probably won't.
Yeah.
Okay.
So on, on this one, because of how well-patronized Manor is and how often I feel like I see people at this coffee shop and these restaurants, I feel like we should propose like no net loss of commercial on this one and require it on... and require it on the north parsh, portion of it, along Oceana and Manor to have ground floor retail, but not super deep, again, the same kind of twenty-five foot deep.
Can we say no net loss in commercial space and parking, 'cause there's never any parking in there?
I would concur with that, 'cause I'm concerned about the neighbors behind here.
Well, I think the part, so I think, I think instead of saying no net loss in parking, you're getting rid of, oh, I see what you're saying, because there's no net loss to commercial, there's no net loss, of course.
Yeah. I don't know how you achieve that, but.
Think you gotta get out the shovel again.
Maybe this is one where we can put, well, never mind.
I like the idea, um, Commissioner Berman brought up about the key corner. Potentially, right there, um, gosh.
At Manor and, uh, Oceana.
Yes, you've got Mizetti's right across the street.
Yeah.
It's a really high-traffic, foot-traffic area.
It's hard traffic too.
And, you know, having a little, sort of, what, you know, whatever you can have there, I think it would be aesthetically pleasing.
Mm-hmm, I agree. So, key corner on this one, um, I think the goal is to have additional, like, you know, we talked about parking for everything, but this is one where we'd wanna try to go above the baseline. Unless anyone disagrees with Commissioner Ferguson, but I think it's a good idea. Building height, you wanna just, I'm gonna go down.
Thirty-five.
For fifty dwelling units per acre. Okay.
Chair, we need a minute. This is, um, this table does not reflect the site. Um, it looks like there was a typo in the draft housing element, so, um, I believe the calculated areas, the one point two-five and point seven-six are correct, but we're confirming, um, what the proposed density is for this site.
Okay. Is this a good time for us to take a five-minute recess?
That's fine from staff's perspective, thank you.
All right, it is ten twenty-seven, we'll reconvene at ten thirty-two. Manor, and I think when we took the recess, staff had mentioned that there were some clarifications that needed to be made on this one. Mr. Murdock?
Yes, Chair Hauser, Brienne Harkusha, um, Senior Planner. The, uh, we clarified that it's sixty dwelling units per acre, but the, uh, total area is, acreage is actually roughly three point one acres.
I'm sorry, so it's seven point three total site acre, three point one area assumed for housing in the blue shading, and sixty dwelling units per acre here?
No, the seven point three is, is misstated. The overall site area is about three acres and the combined area of the two blue polygons is approximately two acres.
So three point one, I'm going left to right on the screen.
Yeah.
Three point one for total site area, two for area assumed for housing, sixty for density?
Correct.
Okay, and total units?
Uh, I think we calculated one hundred, ninety-seven or one hundred.
Okay, um, so let's go down the row for height, starting with you, Commissioner Wright. I'm sorry, I'm picking on you, especially after the.
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet, okay. Commissioner Godwin? Height, how do you feel about height for this site?
I don't have a strong opinion. Thirty-five feet sounds okay to me.
Okay, Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah, I live at three stories here.
Um, Commissioner Berman?
Thirty-five as well.
And Commissioner Devine?
Agreed.
Okay.
And we're, 'cause we're talking about both the polygons, right?
Yes, we're talking about both polygons.
And thirty-five.
Um, I.
Chair, I just wanna note, I wasn't able to hear Commissioner Ferguson's, um, input on the height.
Yeah, thirty-five.
Thank you.
So I, I think what you're hearing from all the commissioners is that this is a site that they wanna see thirty-five feet at. I had actually thought that this would be a good site for forty-five feet, but then requiring a thirty-foot setback from the single-family on the back. If we're gonna stick with thirty-five feet, I would, um, ask that there be a twenty-foot setback from the single-family commercial on the back. Does anyone have an objection to a twenty-foot setback adjacent to single-family homes?
In order to give the single-family homes more light, do you wanna do a setback and then a third-story setback too?
I don't, because I don't think at thirty, I think thirty-five feet is already the height for the city and I think twenty feet is already the rear setback, and I think that would be making it more, I think it's hard to upzone property and make it more, um, obtrusive to build at the same time.
These are relatively narrow. From a constructability standpoint, would it make more sense to have a gradation height coming from the back, like, a single-story, five-foot setback coming up to thirty-five, and you've already got, most of this lot line is built up right to the lot line?
Are you saying, Commissioner Ferguson, that at a five-foot setback, you could build one story, at a ten-foot setback, you could build two-story, and at a fifteen, um,
Twenty.
Twenty-foot setback, you could build three-story?
That's what I'm getting at.
I'm. Mr. Murdock, can you comment? I do see what Commissioner Ferguson is saying about the proximity. Are these non-conforming lots?
Um, are you referring to the development that's presently on the commercial site?
No, we're saying that the single-family home does not seem to have the same rear setback as the municipal code is requiring.
Uh, that could be the case. Um, many of these homes were built prior to the current zoning ordinance, and so, um, that's possible. I don't have the specific figures for any of those sites.
I was also talking about the existing commercial buildings, seeing much less than twenty feet from the.
There'd also be a big impact on any solar that they may wanna do if we don't allow that light to come in from the west.
Okay. Am I amenable to Commissioner Ferguson's proposed setbacks?
Yeah, I'm just looking at, from constructability, we already got a dry mile on the west side. In the center, commercials gonna, to achieve that setback, otherwise with the parking, you're gonna have to snake it around.
Can I make a proposal that in order to achieve higher-quality three-story, that we allow this height to go to forty feet, so that we can get things like gables and not have flat roofs, but something that maybe matches like Mizetti's and stuff across the street, but still limit it to three-story? Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you. So, um, what I've heard so far is height, forty feet, three-story. FAR, no net loss to commercial. Parking, looking at additional parking uh, above what we established at the beginning of this meeting. And then setbacks, we had the five-foot for one story, this is on the rear, five-foot for one story, ten-foot for two-story, and twenty feet for three-story. And then along, uh, the public streets, which are Avalon, Oceana, and Manor, I would propose a five-to-ten-foot setback of minimum and maximum.
When are we gonna key the corner too?
And, and a key, correct, and a key corner. Does everyone feel good about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we, so on Oceana, the setback, does that include the sidewalk?
No, that's a setback from the property line.
Okay.
Are you, are you anticipating that we ask for a sidewalk improvement of another separated sidewalk? 'Cause I would concur with that.
Um, I guess it's, it looks, I see now the, okay. Yeah, the property line is at the back of walk. I mean, I, I'm an advocate for wider sidewalks and landscape strips, pretty much always, if they're gonna be utilized, and I feel that it would be utilized here. I, and, you know, if we need the extra space, I'm fine leaving that out. I was just kinda looking for clarification, just making sure. I'm trying to keep track of the polygons and where the lines actually end.
I think it would improve that corner a lot to have landscape strip.
You would, yeah.
Separate sidewalk, yeah.
And I think just on Oceana and maybe not on Manor and Avalon.
Yeah, agreed.
Could you just refresh my memory what our commercial requirement is on this lot?
We are saying no net loss of the commercial, which is if you look in the blue, it's the Starbucks and the Vietnamese restaurant, the taqueria, the small office space on the corner, and that little area that has the comic book store. I think there's a cannabis shop and one other thing there.
Absolutely nothing.
No, that's just a parking lot.
I, I know it's currently a parking lot, but no.
No, no, I don't think commercial down there would be appropriate.
I'd be in favor of adding a little bit more commercial than what's currently there.
I'm, I'm not in favor of it down there, but I'm open, I mean, I think majority rules here, so.
Yeah, I'm okay losing.
Me too.
I'd say no commercial on the south lot.
Okay.
Can go either way.
Commissioner Berman and Commissioner Devine?
I'd say, I, I agree with Commissioner Ferguson, no, um, commercial on the south lot, if possible. I agree as well.
Okay. Okay, is that clear for staff?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, what's next?
Did we, sorry, just real quick, did we wanna address maybe more parking than what we've talked about earlier for the south lot, since we're eliminating a parking lot?
I think.
I said no net loss on the north one, are we gonna say it for both? 'Cause the only way to achieve that would be to have a multi-story parking lot before you started on the south lot.
If I'm looking at the polygon correctly, all of the parking that's reserved for Anderson's is still in here and most of the parking for Twenty-four Hour Fitness that's used is still in here. That lot on the south.
Lots always full, that's.
Is always full?
That lot's always full with somebody, I don't know what they're doing, but.
Would, would people be amenable to going to four stories on the south lot and adding a little bit more parking?
Well, it could be achievable still with three stories, I just thought that the, what do we say, uh, the one unit, one point five unit per one bedroom, one unit per studio, is not gonna be enough, because you're only gonna generate enough parking for the building and you're eliminating all this existing parking.
And then everyone's gonna park in the neighborhood?
Do you wanna just say like an additional fifteen guest parking spots?
Do we go back to no net loss, no net loss parking?
I just think if you say no net loss, because it's, the entire footprint is already parking, the only way to, you, to have no net loss plus ninety-six units worth of parking, you've got a two-story parking garage before you start.
Yeah.
I, I think that what we could do is, I think what we do is we re-assess the square footage of that white building that's not in the polygon and we apply the Sharp Park Specific Plan, Table four dash four, and see if what's currently out of the polygon is sufficient, and if it's insufficient, which I'm sure it is, that we would add additional parking requirements to the, to the, for the south.
I like the idea of adding additional parking requirements, 'cause I am concerned about these backdoor neighbors and the impact, potential impact on them if it gets too busy over there.
I mean, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to what I said, is I think we should true it up with the Sharp Park Specific Plan commercial parking that was studied for everybody amenable to that.
We get a second bite at this apple anyway, right?
Yes, we get a second bite. This is, yeah, this is all theoretical, someone has to analyze this.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Staff, do you have enough?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's keep going.
Valmar Station at two-one-two-five Coast Highway. The total site area is two point four-five acres and the area assumed for housing, shaded in blue, is one point five-eight acres. Density proposed here after rezoning is fifty dwelling units per acre and the total units are sixty-four.
Thank you. Staff, can you, uh, clarify, is there a grade break between the single-family and the east boundary? If I'm remembering correctly, the single-family is significantly higher than the adjacent parking lot.
Yeah, there is.
I believe so, yes.
I believe there's a, a grade break. I don't recall if it's significantly higher, but, um, it is higher in my recollection than the level of the parking lot.
Okay. I mean, I think this is one where I personally think that we can go higher. I think it's a really weird shape and I don't know how you get an efficient state plan, but I, so I appreciate that the polygon is drawn like this, because it preserves the historic building without any, like, if someone owned the whole property and wanted to develop it, they would have to work with the city and they couldn't just, you know, develop over the building, which I think with CEQA, that would also be the case. So it's a hard shape, but I understand the shape and I appreciate it, and I think this is one where I'd be comfortable with more height. I don't think you're blocking much.
When you say more, are you saying forty-five? Are you saying fifty-five? You're saying?
I'd go as high as fifty-five here.
Uh, Commissioner Ferguson, would you speak into the microphone?
I'd go as high as fifty-five here.
Um, just a quick question, so, you know, this area is always beleaguered by traffic and just, it's constantly discussed, um, considering Valmar's, Valmar School is right there. Obviously, I, I understand this is just a study session and nothing's in stone, but as development, uh, projects or applicants come before us, traffic studies, all of these things are going to have to be, have to go through the wash, correct?
A traffic study, uh, is likely to be a part of a major project like this, you know, or any of the other housing element sites. Analyzing level of service will likely be a part of that, in other words, congestion or delay at intersections, particularly as it relates to compliance with the general plan, level of service policy. In addition, uh, most development, um, is subject to one of two, Highway One, um, transportation impact fees to contribute money to, um, transportation-related improvements. However, um, as the commission may be aware, widening of the highway would require a vote of the people in accordance with, um, an action taken by City Council a few years ago. So, um, widening of the highway is not likely to be a project component unless the voters were to approve that. So other transportation-related strategies, like improvements with those fees that I mentioned, or, um, transportation demand management strategies that would likely be part of a, a larger project like this, such as providing bus passes to occupants of the development, in some instances, you know, operating shuttle service, you know, expanding the amount of bicycle storage and parking to encourage bike riding, things to try to reduce the number. to encourage bike riding, things to try to reduce the number of people driving vehicles, um, you know, for their transportation needs. Those are the types of strategies that are likely to, um, be able to be implemented for a project like this.
Thank you.
Does anybody here see an egress point that makes any sense?
I think that would have to be studied, but that is a really difficult left turn onto Valmar when you're leaving there.
Yeah, or an impossible right turn onto Highway One.
I think as we're discussing height and density at this site, that's just the first thing that's like red flag in my mind. And obviously because the hillside goes up, it's not as dramatic in regards to some of the other sites that we've looked at when we talk about higher, you know.
It's going to be an eyesore.
Well, it could be, I mean, the, so right now we're setting the envelope, but eventually the development standards need to include aesthetics, windows, openings, architectural style materials. So the hope is.
Just a huge development right on Highway One where there isn't one anywhere on the, on the Pacifica, right?
If I recall correctly, we had a hard time even putting a sign here. We could achieve some of that with setbacks though.
Why was Valmar Station carved out? Just separate property ownership or historical business preservation or?
Our concern was not complicating a potential development of the site by, um, the historic resource impacts that would likely result. It's a locally designated historical landmark and we didn't want to propose that there be a pathway to redeveloping that as part of the housing element.
Christian, do you have any idea how much elevation difference there is between Highway One and these, um, residences in the back there? Is it more than 20 feet?
I can try to pull up a contour map that might provide some insight for that. It'll take me a moment to do that.
We can also do that at the second bite of the apple if that's too difficult.
It's not difficult, it will just, it will take a moment or two to do that.
We have a four-story building right in the back of the parking lot already.
It's, it's technically three-story, but it's the height of a four, it's the height of a four-story, yeah. And there's a ton of really large trees that create a buffer as well on the south side. That's why I feel like with a big, a bigger setback and some step backs, that this would be a place where I feel like the 55 feet feels okay.
I, I love to hear setback, I love to hear step back. I can't quite bring myself to 55 feet, but you have moved me off my 35 number.
I hear that, I just, I think we have 1,800 and, or I'm going to call it 1,900 units of housing that we have to provide and we have to put them somewhere. I don't know how to do it if we keep making everything 35 feet.
No, what I'm saying is I was already willing on this one to go to 45 because of the hillside, so.
Oh, God, okay.
You, you, you already got some ground.
Okay.
We should put 1,000 units in the quarry.
There you go. I think on that city site, we just build a giant high rise and put them all in one place.
Yeah, that's what Sunset's doing.
Chair Hauser, um, the, the rough contour information that I have ready access to suggests that the grade difference might be approximately 20 feet. It feels to me from memory like it might be a little more, but that's what the data are saying that I have available right now.
So if it is in fact 20 feet, then putting a 55-unit structure there is the equivalent of a 35-unit structure?
As long as we do a little bit of a setback for some solar considerations for those properties, that's fine.
And Chair Hauser, the answer I was providing was relative to Highway One across the frontage. The grade difference is less between other portions of the site and the development beyond to the east.
Is the entrance and exit going to be offering a Del Mar office? Is this what is being envisioned?
Would have to.
Yeah.
Can, can we, can we add, uh, this is really unconventional, but it was Commissioner Berman's idea. Can we add a level of service, uh, objective standard on certain of these sites? I mean, I don't know. Like, this is a great place for housing if no one drives, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know how to.
This is probably the site that has the most traffic issues already in that area.
Yeah, um, that's my feeling about it. I don't, don't understand how you're going to develop this safely without buying in other lots.
Even if you put in a bus stop, how would that, I can't see any way to make it work.
Is this designated as, um, as a low or very low income? Like, what's the affordability level on this site?
Um, it's indicated as providing 64 lower-income units.
Lower income meaning 60 to 80% of AMI or just?
Um, 80% and below.
80% and below.
What if we reduced parking?
That's, maybe this is an apt place for a, I mean, this is an affordable housing development and maybe we do development standards that contemplate deed-restricted affordable housing.
So, yeah, I'm just following along the same, the same train of thought. If you eliminate the parking, someone then has to park there, there's not parking, where would you park?
Probably in the Valmar neighborhood somewhere, which already has difficult parking.
The nearest street parking is not that close.
It's a highly impacted area. It's a highly impacted area and street parking does not begin until alongside the market at the tree line right there. And even that, um, we're talking about a two-lane road that goes into a very congested neighborhood with a school and the school district building and a gas station.
And no good way to turn around.
We're talking, I, I mean, in, in regards to emergency accessibility? Um, I'm, I'm, in my mind, I'm like, I'm really trying to figure out how people are getting in and out of here.
Well, they do it for Gorilla Barbecue somehow, so it's, it can be done, it's just.
We're talking 30 people in line.
Well, so, so there are housing types that fit into this scenario really nicely. So like deed-restricted senior affordable housing or assisted living facilities, where there are very few trips and very few cars. And I don't know if that's something that we are able to consider in making these development standards.
Well, certainly not an objective development standard. It's policy feedback we can take as part of the overall housing element process and see if there's an opportunity to do that for the site.
Does assisted living count toward arena numbers?
Uh, it, it may, uh, I believe, under some circumstances, but, um, I don't have enough information to give you a strong answer on that right now.
Is there a need for more assisted living in the city? I don't know if you.
There, there's a need for more housing of all types, including assisted living, absolutely.
I recall from many months ago, we had a commenter on a different project, or maybe it was when we first looked at the housing element. They have a housing development south of here and they were wondering why it wasn't included as one of the sites to review. Is that, is there an opportunity to perhaps incorporate that site that's already halfway through development or halfway through planning for housing? Sorry.
I'm, I'm not recalling a site that's halfway through planning. We did add a parcel in response to the public comment, um, just south of the site. It's currently designated mixed-use neighborhood. We did add that into the housing element site inventory.
What, what's the project? Was it Pacifica Highlands or something or?
So Pacifica Highlands is a project that's currently in the planning process.
Right.
There was a separate commenter, not part of the Pacifica Highlands project, that was speaking about a property adjacent to that Pacifica Highlands project. The adjacent property is the one that we added into the housing element site inventory.
Okay, got it. For ingress egress, I don't see how you put it anywhere other than on Highway One as far south as possible. I mean, you could have an egress on Reyna Del Mar, but, or you could have an ingress and an egress, but you can't have a left turn out. Which I think having cars only turn right out on Reyna Del Mar would be an unnecessary burden for the neighborhood and for the driver. So I think the main ingress egress would be as far south on Highway One and that would be a pain to find the gap time to actually get out.
Even at lights though? I mean, when the light's red, people usually let you in.
Like at a traffic signal?
Yeah.
At the light there, I used to get coffee at the Gaboose all the time and I would drive around the back door.
That assumes only one car is trying to leave though, because what if there are 10 cars that are trying to leave?
Like during peak hour, like.
Yeah, I was doing that during commute hours.
Sorry, I'm like, maybe it's the time of night, but did we get an answer to whether we could do a level of service?
Oh, yeah.
Related objective standard?
I'll offer the same response that we already have one, um, and so I'm not sure what more I could offer you tonight. We weren't prepared to dive deeper into level of service as an objective development standard.
Okay.
So in light of all this, do we want to limit the number of units here in another way? Like lowering?
25-foot setbacks and 25-foot height restriction?
I mean.
If you're catching what I'm getting to.
I do, but we, I mean, we can't.
Make it, uh, separate property owners too.
I mean, we can't undermine the housing element. We, I mean, we can't.
How much fudge factor do we have, Christian? Don't we have more sites identified than we need?
So the draft housing element we prepared has a roughly 30% buffer overall in terms of number of units. Our required number of units is 1,892 across all income levels and we have a 30% buffer on top of that, which is at the high end of what the state Housing and Community Development Department, HCD, recommends. Within that, we have over a 50% buffer for lower-income units to try to create as many opportunities for lower-income housing as possible and also to recognize that many of the sites designated for lower income may not develop as lower-income housing sites. And so we can hopefully avoid no-net-loss problems with approving housing projects.
So you've heard us and our concerns up here. Do you have a sense of what, does staff have an opinion? In light of what we've been discussing on what might work to address all of our concerns?
For, for the Valmar Station site or overall tonight?
The Valmar Station site.
I, I don't have a good sense yet with a 35 or 40-foot height limit and a 60 dwelling unit per acre density. Uh, I don't have a good sense of how to make that work at this point.
I wonder, and I don't think that this really, like, if the answer comes back as like, no, you can't do that, then this is unhelpful. But I wonder if we provide a height limit that targets assisted living or deed-restricted senior housing, a maximum parking that discourages other uses and put it into the objective standard, like, put it somewhere in to the housing element that the goal for this site is senior housing that does not require a lot of trips to be generated on, onto Highway One or into the Valmar neighborhood.
Now I'm imagining seniors, senior restricted housing with drivers.
And then what are we doing to the property owner too?
That's a good point, that's a good question.
I hate to, I'm not trying to be negative about it, but I'm thinking about emergency vehicles. We're talking about, okay, assisted living, senior elderly living, you know, ambulances. I'm, I'm, I'm really thinking about it from an emergency access point of view, a, aside from, you know, the neighborhood and whatnot.
It's already required to have the hammerhead turnaround, right, as part of the development?
If it's 150 feet dead end. That's far, that's CFC. But I guess for emergency access, there already has to be emergency access here. So the traffic on, if the concern was traffic on Highway One, emergency vehicles already have to deal with it. I guess the lesser of all evils is if there's a housing development here that doesn't generate a lot of vehicle trips and also doesn't have that many parked cars or moving cars within the property that an emergency vehicle needs to deal with. Because regardless, if they have to get here and leave, they have to already.
Right. So, we talked a little bit at the onset of this when the LOS question came up about what SEQA traffic required. But I don't think we talked about what SEQA analysis could provide. And so is it possible that we do a little bit more of an in-depth traffic study as part of the EIR for this project?
I, I'm not sure I could commit to that under the timing constraints that we have. We have the minimal obligation to plan for the arena and do the required environmental preview for that. I don't know that we'll have the ability and the time to do a more in-depth site-specific analysis for emergency vehicle access or what have you at a, a design level for the project.
I'm not in any way in favor of developing the quarry, should throw that out there before anyone jumps down my throat. But the idea that this is a better place to put dense housing than the open space across the street is just, it's not. There's nobody that can say that.
I would agree.
I agree.
As do I.
I don't know where that leaves us, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm stuck. I think we all are feeling in the same position. I said at the onset of this meeting that we're in a really rough position, just like many other cities, um, except unlike many cities, we don't have BART, we don't have Caltrain, we don't, I mean, it's inexplicable why arena numbers are this high. However, they are what they are and.
And Caltrans has a lot of responsibility for creating this mess for us.
Well, well, beyond that, I think the issue is that if we don't in some way protect these sites by creating guidelines, then somebody could come in and put anything there. And we don't want them to put anything there. We want them to put something that, I, I don't know. It's a really hard position and I'm tempted to just keep moving on because it's 11:15.
Well, one quick question. It's currently a 35-foot height requirement, right? What, if we didn't change that, what would that do to our numbers? And we left it a 35-foot height requirement with the density that we're allowed, would that give you the numbers you need to meet the numbers on this table?
Are you talking overall for the housing elements?
No, for, for this one lot. You obviously had some goal in mind for this lot. What would a 35-foot height requirement do to you for this lot?
It would probably require very small units and probably less off-street parking than would be desirable. Are my two initial reactions? Beyond that, I don't know if I can speculate, but the lower height certainly constrains a number of the other favorable development standards that commissions express wanting, like usable open space, ample off-street parking, variety of unit sizes, so it's not all studios or one bedrooms, there's a variety. Those are compromised by a 35-foot height limit on this site, in my opinion.
Seems like a lose-lose site to me.
Too bad we couldn't put us into the teacher housing right here.
Do we have any authority to strike this from the list? Or is that impractical?
I think not right now is the answer. And I think we just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the decision that we're gonna keep going and if we have extra time and someone wants to come back, we can, but we're gonna skip this one for now. Because I don't think that there's a good answer, no matter how you slice up. So let's move to the next site.
So then should we go for the 45-foot height requirement? And when we get the second bite at the apple, perhaps we'll have some more input about whether we can do the assisted living and some of those other considerations. And then if we can pare it down, we pare it down. and some of those other considerations, and then if we can pare it down, we pare it down.
I'm okay with that.
How about in the short term, just reduce the density? Let's pick something like townhouses.
I think, yeah, I think the density, like, what you see on the screen is what's submitted.
Okay, so the density can't be changed either?
Well, I think what we should presume is the density will remain as it is, because we're waiting for the state's comments. If there's feedback related to density more directly, we don't think we can come up with suitable development standards that will also enable the density, which is what I'm hearing. That's relevant feedback for us to consider as we're responding to the state's comments, for example, and bringing something back to a joint study session with the Planning Commission and City Council. But at this time, I don't think that should be one of the variables that can change. But if you have concerns about other objective development standards that would influence the ability to achieve the density, like height, now is a good time to provide that feedback.
Since we're probably not gonna get to this one tonight, should we just give it some minimum standards and come back to it later versus giving it nothing?
Part of the challenge, which I think, you know, you're struggling with, staff struggled with, the city council struggled with, the community struggled with, is we have this housing allocation, it has to go somewhere. And, you know, what I've heard thus far tonight at this midpoint is, you know, the heights that have been discussed and so on for a number of the sites, that you're concerned about the units going in some of these locations, or at least large enough buildings that I had imagined would be needed to reasonably accommodate these densities. And so we're gonna have to think carefully, if we can't reasonably accommodate them on these sites, where else can they go? We haven't found as staff really many more options of places to put them that don't also violate some of the other community priorities, you know, that were expressed through the general plan update and housing element outreach processes. And so at some point, something's gonna have to give in terms of the types of projects in the scale and height and density, or the types of sites that, you know, we're accepting as a community, because I don't think we can reconcile both reasonably.
I think this site is actually a good location for height and density. It's just a safety factor on this specific, there's no good way in and out.
Yeah, we're getting stuck on safety here.
All right, move on?
I think we move on, and you've heard the concerns, and maybe that can be the guidance.
I need to leave.
Thank you for staying so late, Commissioner Burman.
Thank you.
All right, Lindemar Shopping Center. In the interest. I'll stay for one more?
I'll stay for one more.
So I feel like this is a really good place for a larger project because it's removed from mostly everything, and there are signalized intersections here, and it's replacing commercial. So my sense on this, I'll just kick it off, was that I thought that this needed to be a thirty-foot setback to the single-family dwellings with a maximum of three-story adjacent to those, but it could go up to five stories elsewhere, and that there was no need for commercial here, because this area has, I mean, we don't need the big box and the bank, like, it's not replacing.
This polygon doesn't cover Safeway?
It does not cover Safeway. I believe this is Ross Dress for Less, a bank, and a fitness area.
Friday.
So could you reiterate your comment about there's, how, how far is the setback from those rear houses?
I had a thirty-foot, I had a thirty-foot setback from the rear houses. And then once you hit that thirty-foot setback, you'd only have three stories allowed. Beyond three, the, beyond that general, like, you'd have to have three stories adjacent to the single-family home property line, and then you could go up to five stories after that.
Okay, so you have thirty feet back, then you go up to fifty-five feet.
No, you have thirty feet back, then you go up to three stories, step back, and then you go to five stories.
So you. How far is the setback between?
The step back?
The step back between thirty-five feet?
I envision it would probably be about twenty feet.
So ten and ten? If you're at, if you're at thirty-five, so forty-five, fifty-five?
So you have the property, here's a single-family home, you have a property line. You have thirty feet with nothing in it, no structures. Then you go up three stories, yeah, up to thirty-five feet, over twenty, and up to five.
Okay, how about if we break that, over twenty to ten, one story, ten, another story? Forty-five, fifty-five?
I think that twenty feet gives an opportunity for some deck space, maybe, or.
But so does the ten feet for each of those floors.
It's not as use, it's hard, it's not as usable then.
I agree with Commissioner Burman. It's, you're getting fifty feet before, away from the single-family homes before the five stories start, which I thought was really important.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I was just looking to give both floors a little bit of outside space.
I concur with the thirty-twenty.
Let's go with it.
How about on the, on the creek side, just five feet? Push the density somewhere?
Yeah, I'm, I like that idea of five feet, as long as we're respecting the creek setback. That would be sensitive if it's, I mean, creeks are sensitive.
Yeah, I'm sure that's legislated elsewhere, though, right?
So the general plan has a creek setback of one hundred feet.
From the center line of the creek, though, right, or from the, is it from edge of riparian area? What's the?
I don't recall it specifies what part of the creek, so I, I don't know how to answer that right now.
I would say the setback should be five feet from the edge of riparian area at the minimum, but any stricter requirements in our code or in state or federal code govern. And I said, I said federal, but.
That's a fact, right?
Yeah, that's a fact.
Yeah.
Okay.
Five feet from existing hardscape boundary?
Yeah, I could, I understand. Sure. If they move to existing hardscape and like a remodel and that, I think we're gonna have to like figure out.
Sure.
They're probably, speaking of hammerheads, there probably is going to need to be some fire access back there, but again, that would be a code thing that they would have to comply with.
I, I agree with that. I'm actually thinking that because the polygon has the two corner lots, I think that they probably can exit onto the street.
Like emergency vehicle.
EVA out to there, I'm guessing, if they own that. Unless the butters are reserved, but I don't think.
I just don't know, I guess I don't know what overrides what. I'd imagine fire code and emergency access would override any concession that a developer could try for, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Then a five-foot setback from the existing pavement, sounds good.
Yeah, I only say the existing pavement, because I imagine if you tore up that pavement, the riparian zone would retake that whole parking lot in a couple of years.
I would agree. And then I think on the inter, interior property lines, I'm actually okay with a five feet on the Safeway side and a zero feet on the parking lot side.
I would say more than a five foot on the Safeway side to allow.
A vehicle?
Pedestrian access. Like, like.
Oh, between the building and the?
A pedestrian access that I can't touch with, you know, I'm not like touching both of the buildings.
Are you thinking like ten feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like a paseo, like a little.
That sounds better. I like, I like the ten feet. And then you're okay with the zero feet on the parking lot side?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do the, does the Safeway require a pull-through for their loading and unloading around the back there?
It's, it's the, the white truck on the screen.
Are they only able to?
They back, they back into it. Like, look at the front of the truck on this. The truck can pull out. I mean, this is definitely bigger than a seventy-foot hammerhead, like, it's definitely bigger than what's required with the fire code appendix D.
I'm guess, well, for delivery, I'm guessing they do like a three or four-point turn before getting behind Safeway, is what I'm guessing. Oh, they drive straight? Maybe.
Yeah, I, I think that's what I've seen, is them driving around.
They drive all the way around.
I believe so. At least some trucks do.
Is that something we can put on Christian's plate to examine?
I guess.
I mean, this is one property owner, and they have a tenant that they have to provide access for, so I don't think that they would propose anything. Like, I think this is going to be self-resolving.
Yep.
And speaking of self-resolving, Christian, these things where, especially fire access and code requirements, do we need to be spinning our wheels and spending time on how to accommodate them? Or are those just gonna have to be accommodated no matter what?
They will need to be accommodated no matter what. But we don't need to worry about them too much right now, in my opinion. Once we formulate a more complete picture of what the standards may be, I think the next bite at the apple, as someone's called it, may want to think through a couple of hypotheticals to say, let's test these, let's stress-test this package to see, will it be feasible and actually work? But we probably won't ever get to actually designing these sites on our own at the Planning Commission stage, because we just don't have enough information about what the actual project will look like. And, you know, qualified architects and engineers, they're employed for this purpose to, to make it all work for a particular project site.
Okay, thank you.
I don't mean to bring up another complication, but this lot gets utilized a lot in the summer for beach parking.
Movies. Isn't this where they do the drive-in movies?
Yeah, I don't know how popular that is, but.
Well, actually, that reminds me, and a commenter mentioned this, and it's something that I've mentioned before during the LCLUP process. I feel like we need more community gathering spaces, and it's actually quite sunny in this side of Pacifica pretty often, so.
Ooh, open space requirement.
Open space, yeah.
What are you thinking?
Increasing the commute, or the.
The amenity, the common, open space requirement.
Open space requirement.
And encouraging that the applicant open it to the public.
We can't require that?
Is there a park required here under the open space element currently, or any sort of space for the? I don't know if you heard Commissioner Ferguson's question. Let's all speak into our.
Can we require public access to the open space?
So to my knowledge, there's not a park proposed here in the general plan on the Lindemar Shopping Center. Residential projects are required to make parkland dedication. And so they can either do that by dedicating land or paying a fee or a combination, and so.
Could they build us a bridge to the beach?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, right?
Could we make them build us a bridge to the beach?
I'm not sure that we could make them build a bridge to the beach as a part of the parkland dedication requirement. But what may be possible as part of the parkland dedication is creating some sort of public plaza space or gathering space that could satisfy their parkland dedication alone, or maybe in concert with the usable outdoor area requirement for each unit that's in addition to the parkland dedication requirement. So I think there are some interesting options to explore, given the size of the site and where it is in town and so forth.
So I have, I have an idea. What if we make, because this is a lot of units, right, a hundred and eighty-two units? What if we make the open space requirement four hundred square feet, which is the current municipal code? We skew it a hundred, and what was it, six by ten?
Hundred and twenty to two eighty?
Yeah, so we, we skew it as a minimum of sixty square feet of private, and the rest of it can be common. Or that can be reduced if instead of the park and loofah, the developer provides publicly accessible, usable open space to the city. And that way, they have this ridicu, I mean, not ridiculous, but they have this really big requirement to have a lot of open space, and I mean, just doing some quick math, a hundred and eighty-two homes at three. Let's assume that, what, I mean, what's our ratio, Mr. Murdock? Is it like three people per dwelling unit in the parkland?
I'm not recalling the ratio. Our subdivision standards is the only ratio that I remember right now. It's point zero two acres per unit.
So point zero two.
For that's, for subdivisions, there's no guarantee this would be subdivided, but it's a helpful frame of reference.
Okay, I mean, that's a really large parkland dedication that we could get out of that. So I think, I think that that's, and that way, they could also benefit from not having to pay the fee.
Right, I think what's more likely is that they, they wouldn't be subject to the parkland dedication potentially, given the rental nature, but they might be subject to a sizable parkland dedication fee that they may want to satisfy with an onsite dedication of, of some sort.
It has to be open to the public, is the key thing.
Ri, right, to satisfy that parkland requirement, it would need to be dedicated for the public access. To, to the earlier question about the one-hundred-foot creek setback, the general plan provides that that's one hundred feet from the top of the creek bank or the outer edge of riparian vegetation where it exists.
Okay. Well, it's, it's unclear where the top of bank is. The edge of riparian area is different, so I don't, it may be, I don't know.
And it provides for exceptions under certain circumstances where supported by biological report in combination with incorporated siting design or other mitigation measures. So there's some flexibility there, but the presumption is you're starting a hundred feet from top of bank.
At, at like mean-high water line, or? That lower part of San Pedro Creek is very different in the summer and the winter.
Right.
It's, it's top of bank, which is where it stops, like, the grade stops changing, and it just, like, there's a, it gets mapped. Okay, so I think, I think just to recap, height is fifty-five feet, except that the setback from the single-family side would be thirty feet, and you'd have the next twenty feet as thirty-five-foot height limit, okay? The setbacks for the other sides would be ten feet on the Safeway side, zero feet on the parking lot side, and five feet from edge of pavement or as governed by other municipal code requirements for creeks. The lot coverage, we already talked about at the onset, the FAR is zero here. There's no requirement for commercial. The open space is four hundred, broken up with the sixty versus three forty, with the encouraging factor that we just beat to death about parkland dedication. And then the parking, I think, just stays with what we established at the beginning of the meeting. Get that?
That all sounds good to me, and, yeah, I really like the idea of having some public usable space in this area. So I just want to stress that.
Yeah, ten-four.
Great suggestion. That's actually pretty exciting for that area.
All right. Is that our fifth site?
Yes, that's the fifth site.
They're getting easier.
They are getting, yeah.
I have to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Burman. Thanks for staying. Okay, Terranova High School. Does anyone want to start?
I hate the idea of building on this site. It's taken away a playing field that in the future I can see us needing. But I also understand the constraints and the handcuffs that are being put on us by the state. I think this is shortsighted and stupid.
All right, other comments? Okay, my two cents on this one is this one should, so there's already a setback from the single-family residential incorporated into the polygon, and the large trees are already accepted from the polygon, which I appreciate. So I think this one would be, I think, four-story.
I think because of the grade change on the, is it the west side there, you could go to four stories easily?
Yeah, I think this would be a good place for four-story, and then a front setback of ten or fifteen feet with a separated sidewalk, although it's such a small frontage, maybe we don't change. Although it's such a small frontage, maybe we don't change the sidewalk, because that'll look weird.
What setback on the high school side?
That's what I was thinking. I'm like thinking about the high school side.
What, what are your thoughts, Commissioner Berman?
You got a grade change there, too, right at the polygon line, right?
I think so. I don't know how significant it is right there, though.
You know, you're gonna create a huge traffic problem there when school's getting out. And when, same thing as, as on Valamar, that's horrible.
But since it's a school site, it's possible that the school uses it for faculty, which would mean not a lot of, like, you could have a lot of in-commuting. You just walk to work. Maybe.
Yeah, let's go with that.
I definitely would not go beyond four stories here.
Agree.
Yeah, the grade change down to the high school is pretty substantial. Rear setback, zero on the, on the far...
I, I have a rear setback zero because the polygon already creates a setback.
I wonder how much space that is?
On the, on the 147.92 foot side.
Oh, God, I need my class. Oh, how, how much did you say?
I said zero on the very back.
Oh, because of the tree line right there?
I think you have to stay out of the tr-- I mean, I think we have to stay out of the tree line. So my setback should be edge of canopy.
That look like 10 feet?
Won't the, won't the general plan tree guideline cover that?
Christian, is this an HPD site?
Let me check.
Okay.
The site itself is completely flat.
So the total site area is 43 acres, and the area assumed for housing is four. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct, because the entire site is Terranova High School.
I see.
Just like when we have Oceana High School, it'll be 55 acres.
Okay, so it's still deceiving. Okay.
Yeah.
What was the height you were suggesting again?
You know, I was suggesting 45.
45?
Yeah.
I empathize with your concerns, Commissioner Wright. I grew up on Shenandoah, which is a court right up and over Everglades, and was stuck in that traffic every single day. And now my kids are at Terranova Christian Preschool, and I was stuck in that traffic every single day. So I empathize with that, with the challenge right there, you know?
And then, you know, it's all those same considerations we talked about before, but we're stuck with that same thing. And one of our only ways that we can really limit how many units go there and how bad we make it is with the height requirement. But at the same time, we're obligated by the state to have to provide units, so...
I think, I think at some point, the city needs to do a really hardcore traffic study that has, I, I mean, if we're not gonna do it as part of this, like, we need to figure out when we're gonna do it, because this is a really big issue. Everyone cares about the issue.
Well, we're adding Oddstead. That's already moving forward. And for folks leaving town to go to work, they're either gonna go down Oddstead and down Lindemar, or they're gonna go up Terranova. So that's something, you know, and thinking about this site as well.
Well, if they put a light at Crespe, then they could, like, go up Alecani and go out Crespe or something is another thing they could do.
So I wanna, just, just kind of getting back to the six things that we're looking at, I think this is another one, and part of the reason I like going 45 here is because I think this is another one where we should have the increased open space of the 400 square feet per unit.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I like all the setbacks we discussed. I think, I think we want to stay out of the trees, but I don't know what setback that is, so maybe staff can do some more analysis.
And to confirm, Chair Hauser, the site's not zoned. Hillside Preservation District only.
Okay, that's helpful. Does any, does that work for everybody? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that enough clarity for staff? Go ahead.
70% floor air ratio for this, too?
That's a great point. No, this one is definitely, that would definitely be too high.
Way too much coverage.
We thinking like...
I was thinking 50.
I was gonna say, can we go as low as 50?
I think we can, because we've made the height enough for the... This is a dwelling units per acre that I actually think makes sense for the site. And at 45 height limit, I think that you're gonna have a lot of opportunity to do.
Will we get big enough units to have families to send kids to these schools?
Well, it's a height limit, right? So they can, they can go lower if they want to. We're just giving them the maximum. Like, someone could do three-story garden-style apartments, which get up to 30 dwelling units an acre. They could do townhomes.
Townhomes would be, you know, it wouldn't be as much of an eyesore on this site.
Okay, I think we should goal, though, to have no eyesores. Like, when we, as we, as we progress with the, with the additional development.
That's the whole point, right? Limit eyesores.
Yeah, so like, no eyesores.
I'm for no commercial on this one.
Absolutely. No commercial on this site.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, it's okay. FAR is zero. Um, can we, shall we move on?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Back to complicated. Anyone want to start? I appreciate that staff kept the whole creek out of the, and the whole riparian area out of the polygon. I think that's great.
Does anybody know, I was just talking to Commissioner Berman about this before she left, but what is the height of the townhomes or the senior living across the street? Do we know what that is? I think it's three stories, but I feel like it could be bordering on four. I don't know.
Not four.
It's not four, it's three.
I don't think there's anything in the city that's four right now.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they're three, but I don't know whether 30 feet or 35 feet, or...
Okay.
I would max out at 35 feet on this site, just to start the discussion about height.
I agree with Commissioner Wright. I think the whole street would look strange with something any taller, given it goes on for a mile or so.
Right.
They're three stories across, and there is a gable. Again, I think for higher-quality architecture, that I would propose that we do three stories here, but 40 feet, so that we could get, like, pitched roofs with higher quality.
You could pitch roofs all around, too.
Yeah. I think when you constrain to 35, you end up with these little, like, if you look across the street, there's just like little squat gable that has no slope, and it looks really...
Well, it's not modern, right? We're not, like, it's not a very modern look.
Yeah. Well, and I think when we do development standards, I have a feeling that we won't want modern to go here, but we discuss that as a permission.
But do you need a pitched roof in this climate?
I don't know if you need one. I think it would look aesthetically pleasing. And I don't think that we should delimit people to flat roofs.
But if we do 40 feet, but you say three stories?
Yeah, three-story maximum, absolutely. There's no four-story here.
So there's no attic with, that gets turned into usable space later?
I don't think, I mean...
I think you don't usually have an attic on multifamily.
Right. There, there's not gonna be room to do any sort of mezzanine or anything, but I think we can make that a development standard, that wherever we go to 40 feet, no half-story or pseudo-story is allowed. It's really true three stories.
What kind of setback are you thinking about from the street?
I mean, if you look across the street, there's a pretty large setback. And every sing-- I mean, Park Mall is on the, the list, the housing element list. But, I mean, I don't see anything that's tight to the street here. So I would think that this is the appropriate place for a 20-foot setback, for a 20-foot front yard setback.
I would agree.
Yeah, I agree. I'm trying to figure out how you preserve access to the library.
It does look strange, doesn't it?
Standards. Like, it seems like you've big-spooned the whole library.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it make sense, again, to move the library somewhere else? And just develop the whole site? I mean...
I think that a property owner could decide to propose that and would have to come before us.
Salt City, isn't it?
It's discretionary, yeah. But even a city property...
I mean, part of the concern with this site is making clear to the community that this will remain a library facility of some sort, you know, either in its current service model or the potential future proposed modified service model. But to make clear the housing element's not proposing to eliminate the library function here. As Chair Hauser mentioned, you know, the city, in reviewing a development proposal on this, might say, hey, we can actually yield a better library that's integrated into an overall site plan. But we wanted to make clear as a starting point that it would be preserved on the site.
Well, let me make one last pitch. Can we move it to Park Mall, the library? There's plenty of open space.
I think there is so much traction with, like, the Library Advisory Committee and all of the different processes that the city has gone through, that we probably don't want to intermingle that discussion with this one.
Okay. It just looks odd to me.
Yeah, the polygon doesn't have good PR on this one.
I'm assuming there would have to be some way. I mean, obviously, for, for patrons to continue utilizing the library and to have some level of parking.
Put no net loss of library parking? All, all eight spots or whatever it is?
I think, my sense is the, the potential future service model here may not need as much onsite parking, potentially. So that might unnecessarily restrict the site.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I'm okay with it as shown, without the no-net loss of parking.
Yeah, I'll concede that.
So can we talk about the other, I, I don't think we need a setback in the back, because the polygon already, like, takes that into account. And I think we could do a five-foot setback on the side, on both sides.
Was the one touching the library, you mean?
I was actually meaning the proper, like, the purple property line setbacks. So north and south. I thought those would be five feet. So 20-foot front, 0 feet rear, solely because there's a humongous setback to the edge of the PL. Five feet technical side setbacks, and then, I don't know what you'd have to the library building.
10 feet around the whole building, I think? Or if there's a new plan for the whole site, do we just not restrict it with setbacks in the middle of it?
Is there currently any natural light in the library whatsoever?
Natural light?
Yeah.
I mean, there's a whole central courtyard area.
I was gonna say, the courtyard, really nice.
And it's where that tree is, between the polyline and the building. You can see the little community garden planters on the opposite side. Yeah, I feel like there is a lot of light in there. I don't know if you feel the same.
Yeah, there's a, there's a good amount of light. It's really the courtyard, you know?
I'm in favor of keeping everything else consistent, 70%, what we said, 200, 50-50.
Agree. Okay, any other comments here? Does staff have enough to move on?
Yes, we have enough.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Sanchez Art Center. Thank you for keeping the fields out of the polygon.
It would actually be nice if we could move that line a little bit. That field width isn't quite wide enough for a soccer field.
What was the impetus for the, I mean, I'm going from memory, but I think that that polyline follows the paved area. So what's in here seems to be that parking that you pull into?
Yes.
Like, I don't think that they took any of the field. I think that's drive aisle and parking. Sorry.
No, there's no net loss in field in this polygon.
Right, but it's currently not wide enough for a real soccer field. So if you, if you want it to be a soccer field, then now is the time to speak. If you don't want it to be a soccer field, then that's okay.
What's the dirt area in the back? Is that a...
Dog park?
The, it's a dog park over here. Right by the 547.34, that's where the dog park is.
Thank you. You know, it might be better for development as well. What if you took the 116.96 line on the west property, the west boundary, and you just continued that line southwestward? And took the extra dirt area, so that you, you kind of squared everything out?
That would be an improvement.
Yeah?
I, I would agree with you on that.
Uh, Mr. Murdock, is there a reason that the polyline was jogged eastward, where you get to the 101.22 feet?
It's probably where the edge of the driveway is.
Right, I think we were just trying to identify the existing building and paved area for the most part.
So are, are, does staff concur with the idea of going to the 116.96 feet at the top? Yep, right there, and then taking that line and just dragging it straight all the way down, and then over to meet the 196.02? Yeah, exactly.
Right, so...
Thereby...
Am I understanding to just basically make the polygon more rectangular so that there could maybe be a reconfiguration of the existing fields?
Yeah, I think, I think there's a benefit to the field width, is what Commissioner Wright is saying. And there's also a benefit to a prospective developer who has a more rectilinear site.
I don't have a, an objection to that. I mean, really, the city's in control of the site as part of a future development, similar to the prior Sanchez Library site.
Yeah.
It really just might affect the final number of units, or we may have to adjust the density slightly to still achieve the, the target arena. But those would likely be relatively minor changes.
I think you end up with more in the polygon, so I think you have more room. Like, your acreage will get a little bit bigger.
Right, so your proposal would then take up part of that...
Dirt.
Dirt, the dirt, the field at the bottom.
Yeah.
Understood.
Is there a way, like we do with the ground floor commercial, to require a certain amount of, like, indoor recreational, or in this case, like, art, community space could be incorporated into any development? Because that's, I feel like that's something that Pacifica has the least of, right? Especially with Seabowl gone.
Right. I think this is a unique site, given it's city-owned. I'm not sure how I would recommend trying to make that a zoning standard as opposed to noting it for the record. It's something that the staff's already aware of in terms of marketing this site for potential development to ensure that we can hopefully recover, you know, sufficient remaining art space, given the importance of the existing facility.
We could, we could set a minimum, we are the city. We could set a minimum, we could set a minimum FAR for civic, active civic space, enclosed active civic space.
That was what I was asking, yeah.
So I think that's one of the things that we're being asked. So, I mean, here I feel very similar about the idea of the 30-foot setback from the single families. And then, again, 20 feet of three-story, and here I would go up to four-story, once you pass the three. I like the setback.
So isn't everything else in that neighborhood thirty-five feet, though? Because if you.
Everything in Pacifica is thirty-five feet.
Right.
We have a citywide height limit that was removed for part of Sharp Park and hasn't been built yet.
Chair Hauser, could you repeat your setback in the height?
Well, it definitely has not been, it's not a recommendation yet. But what I had said was, you'd have a thirty-foot setback from the east property line. And then you'd have a twenty-foot zone that had to be three-story maximum, like the thirty-five-foot height limit. And then you would go up to forty-five feet after that. In my image of the site. And I think that also gives enough space for like a really generous ground floor with really nice art spaces.
One more discussion of height. There's no views or anything, so it would be blocked off by a taller building here. It would just be a little bit out of character with the neighborhood.
I mean, I would, I think I'd be amenable to that if we also set a requirement that you started with thirty-five feet off of Lindemar.
Yeah.
And then we kind of telescope up.
Can I ask one other question? With this other large lot right here, if we say forty-five feet here where the nursery is.
I can't see your screen, I'm sorry.
The nursery to the west.
The nursery to the west?
Yeah.
Then it would only make sense then that that also be forty-five feet. It seems like we're kind of choosing a standard now that's going to dictate that later, too. Is that something that we're all okay with?
Um, can you, sorry, can you restate? I just didn't follow it.
Um, where the nursery is?
To the west.
Yeah, it's going to be hard to argue that they're not entitled to forty-five feet when they want to develop. If we make this forty-five feet, is that something that we're all okay with?
Well, I think the zoning, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Murdock, but I think the zoning changes are only being applied to sites that are housing element opportunity sites. And so I don't think, I think that site would have to go through a full rezone process.
It doesn't set any precedent for other.
Because it would be a different zoning, I think. I don't know, it's a great question.
Right, I'm trying to confirm the zoning of the adjacent site right now.
Just for the record, I'm still in favor of thirty-five feet for here.
For the whole site, thirty-five feet?
For this one, I'd do the forty feet with the peaked roofs.
For Sanchez Art Center, is that what we're talking about? Okay.
Because if we're looking to get a hundred-and-thirty units out of four acres.
But you want to preserve all the community uses of the property also?
I'd like the ground floor to stay art center.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking also.
If they keep the ground floor art center, then I'd be okay with forty-five feet.
That's, then we're saying the same thing.
Okay.
I think the. You're okay with that, too?
I'm in support of that. If it was not a possibility to guide developers in that direction or even to push in that direction, I would definitely be more amenable to thirty-five feet.
Well, I think, I think there's like the double whammy of we can put it in here.
I understand.
And it's a city site, so we would require it in a PSA. That'd be ideal.
I think we're good on this one, aren't we?
I think we're waiting on Mr. Murdock to answer your question about the state to the west.
It's not that important at this point. I think we moved past it.
Did we establish setbacks for this one on the, on the field and Lindemar side?
We said thirty-five feet on Lindemar. Because I heard you say that.
I said that when it was fifty-five feet, but I actually also think that we should do that for forty-five feet if everyone's still cool with it. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty feet on the field side for access? I guess it'd have to be at least twenty-five if you've got two-way traffic.
We're really skinnying up what we're asking, like, I don't want to make it undevelopable, but I agree with you.
Or you have to access the field somehow for them to be usable.
Yeah, and those fields are going to need to have parking. Okay. We'll put it in there and you guys can tell us if it, if we've really made this undevelopable.
That was a twenty-foot.
So I'll kind of, let me restate. This is a forty-five-foot site with thirty-five feet along the frontage. A thirty-foot setback from the single-family dwelling units with the twenty feet of thirty-five feet there. We changed the configuration of the polyline to be more rectilinear and more developable. No setback on the bottom because it's already considered. A twenty-foot setback on the field side. And a fifteen-foot setback on the front, consistent with the municipal code. Because it's thirty-five, does that feel good?
Let's see what we can do with it.
And we'll see what we can do with it. And, and really importantly, no net loss of art space on the ground floor. Actually, it doesn't need to be the ground floor, art could be anywhere. So no net loss of art space.
Art square footage.
Yeah, art square footage.
What are we doing about parking for the art center?
It'll have to be, I mean, it'll be incorporated into the polyline. Oh, but we don't, I don't think that was a use that was contemplated in Table Four for. Let me look.
So my only concern is that the no net loss for the art space might be a high bar for a potential future project. I mean, sizable amount of that existing building is already art space.
That's why we gave him a whole extra ten feet.
So this site is designated as a lower-income housing site and it's city-owned, so it's not clear that there's a strong market component of providing an extra floor for providing community benefits. So it could be an economic challenge for the project to have a no net loss of art space.
How many square feet of art space is it?
I don't have a square footage readily available. We could figure that out.
It's the only indoor art space in Pacifica, other than Clay Creations.
I'm not contesting the importance of the site. I'm saying that's a very strict standard in terms of potential future art space for a lower-income housing project that also has other.
I just can't, I can't square prioritizing adding lower-income housing at the expense of our only indoor art space in the whole city.
I mean, we really, like, with Seebol closed, there's nowhere for, for people and kids especially to go that's indoors. So if you're going to have a year like this year with like eight atmospheric rivers, everyone's going to have to go to Dealey City and Colma, and no one can stay where they live.
They also have a lot of art classes for kids that I definitely frequented over the winter months.
Yeah, so do we.
On the positive side, a lot of the shaded area is not currently building structure, so we're not talking about the whole thing.
Right. Could we lower the percentage possibly? Would that be?
Well, we could say no net loss, which would, in my, just from my rough looking at this, we're looking at about fifty percent of the ground floor.
I would say let's call it no net loss for now. And then if we, at the next time that we review this, have a square footage, that might help us reduce it, if there really is an economic issue. Okay. Oh, open space on this one. I think we can keep it the two-hundred because of the fields being there.
Agreed, and the potential retention of community space.
Yeah. Okay, I think that's it for this one. Okay.
Can we get a, who's this, number eight?
Yeah, how many, how many do we have left?
There's two more. This one and one more, Seebol.
Okay, so this one will be the last for Commissioner Devine.
Another fun one.
Yeah. Um, so this one, I think, is actually relatively straightforward because it's thirty dwelling units an acre, which is achievable with our current height limit. And it's across the street, it's not adjacent to single-family. So my feeling on this was a three-story frontage along Paloma with the opportunity for four-story behind.
This is that same issue for fields, though, because we're literally taking away.
It's not an organized, it's not an organized playing field now. I mean, I use it all the time, but.
There's a softball field in the place and one of the local soccer clubs did apply to use this field over a year ago and got turned down because this item is on this piece of paper here.
What if we make this one of the four hundred square feet per unit? Sites?
You mean open space, four hundred square feet per unit?
Say that again?
Four hundred square feet of open space per unit?
Yeah.
If we could, if we could preserve the three hundred feet by three hundred feet by three hundred feet, well, I can't really show you on here, on the west side, that would suffice for the needs for the kids. The advantage of that is, is there's multiple fields here. And as kids age up going through the sports things, the parents get to drop their different age kids off at the same place every time. And that doesn't change.
I mean, I think that we can't change the polygon and just require that this be field, but I think what we could do is require additional open space and change the lot coverage. And then.
As long as we could accommodate that, I'd be all for it.
Okay, because again, the high school owns the site.
They also own a bunch of flat land right, well, I can't show you there. More on the northeast side, there's a big flat spot up there as well that they own that they could build on in addition to the parking lot area. To the northwest, which is also very buildable. So there's plenty of buildable spots there. And in fact, the space on the northwest actually has incredible views. So you would attract much higher dollar figures with those views.
So what do you think of doing a fifty percent lot coverage maximum or even a forty percent lot coverage?
Forty percent I can go with.
Okay, so forty percent lot coverage.
I think the community would really appreciate that as well.
Yeah, I agree. So forty percent lot coverage, I think this is another place where we want to keep the fifteen-foot standard front yard setback.
I think you might need more than that because of the slope. The slope's down from Paloma pretty significantly, at least towards the east of the property.
Yeah.
It's relatively flat on the west portion, but the eastern third has a significant hill between Paloma and the, and the flat field below.
Yes, between there and there, there's a big hill that doesn't help much. And there's also a big berm right there. There's about a five-foot elevation change.
We could leave that to the developer to deal with.
Yeah.
So, so what you're proposing is eliminating the two acres, two westmost acres in the polygon?
Yes.
Or the figure? Okay.
So this, this would, I mean, at a forty percent lot coverage, this has to be townhomes or duplexes. At this density, probably townhomes. So what I'm hearing is a forty percent lot coverage, I'm going to go to, like you're saying, twenty percent front setback?
Twenty feet, you mean?
Twenty feet.
What did I say?
I'm fine with fifteen feet.
Twenty, yeah, twenty feet.
The developer will, the school will figure it out.
Fifteen feet, okay?
Yeah.
I'd be okay with that.
Okay, so fifteen-foot front yard setback. I think we keep the same ones that are in the municipal code, so the five-foot on the sides and the twenty-foot rear.
Okay. Are we going to, are we going to get our number if we do that?
I mean, it's only thirty dwelling units an acre. And we're allowing them, so we're saying three-story on the frontage and we can, they can go four-story behind the frontage. I don't think it's unachievable and ADUs would count if we wanted to, like, if they wanted to put ADUs in to help. Like, ADUs can count to offset the density. I don't know.
You're saying like a.
Well, that could be by two, two.
Two, three-story and.
No, I'm just, I like, so, so a lot of townhomes now have ground floor ADUs or junior ADUs built into them. And it's their only like two or three hundred square feet, but it provides another rental opportunity in a otherwise, you know, for-sale project, which adds an inherent affordability to it, which is great. It counts toward arena numbers and it doesn't require, it doesn't feel like it's, you know, fifty dwelling units an acre. It feels like it's twenty-five dwelling units an acre.
And if they're larger units, it can be like a caretaker unit as well.
Yeah.
Chair Hauser, I'll just add that while a developer could propose that and we could get Rena credit, we wouldn't be able to count those ADUs beyond the assumptions that HCD allows for ADUs as housing element units. They have a very conservative approach about how many ADUs can be assumed for meeting the Rena.
We could just call them two-hundred-square-foot studios, right? Not ADUs?
I mean, I don't even think we need to get into this much detail. I think, I think the question is like, are the parameters we're giving for this really like low lot coverage and these bigger setbacks, can we still get to thirty dwelling units an acre? And I think the answer is yes. That's my feeling.
Great. We can let staff do the analysis, right?
Okay.
Chair, I'm not clear if the commission's directions to exclude the western two acres.
It's not, no. So essentially, the height was the three-story on the frontage, four-story behind. The setbacks were fifteen, the setbacks were the municipal code setbacks that Pacifica has. The lot coverage is forty percent lot coverage. There's zero commercial space, so no FAR. And the four hundred dwelling, uh, open space dwelling unit per acre. Sorry, I'm really tired. There's no acre in the, four hundred square feet per dwelling unit.
But what the goal is, is to preserve the playing area to the west.
And so when we're designating the four hundred per dwelling unit as a general thesis, it's the ten-by-six private and everything else is the common. Like on Lindemar Shopping Center. Okay, does staff need anything else on this, or shall we?
Next one.
Next one.
All right, last one. Thank you, Commissioner Devine. Let's wait for Commissioner Devine to leave to move to the next slide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Almost there.
Last one. I think I also live right next to the Seebol.
Okay. So I'm just going to be my first to throw the hat in the ring that I don't see a world in which we don't have a bowling alley's worth of community neighborhood-serving space.
Yeah, I'm with you. It doesn't have to be a bowling alley, but some kind of indoor recreational space.
Correct, and the key component being indoor.
And they already have bowling machines.
Yeah.
Geez, sure would be a good idea to keep it.
If you had to construct something of this square footage for indoor recreation, what might it be?
Yeah.
There we go.
Um, so I think at sixty dwelling units an acre, which is really tough. Well, let, let's, let's.
As much as I hate to say it, this is a site that's screaming for height.
I, I noticed also we've included the brewery here, which I thought that the first time we saw this, the, they, because it's a separate parcel.
It, it changed, I believe, that to make the square footage work. So, so here's, here's a question that I have. Can we move the polygon to be a portion of the parking lot and the, you know, the sloped area behind it? Which I know is subject to HPD. But can we make that? I mean, you get great views of the ocean up there.
Don't they own part of that then?
I mean, the whole, you can see the whole magenta line around it. The whole magenta line is part of the eight-point-eight acres, so the blue shaded area is four-point-five. So I feel like the four-point-five is in the, the wrong spot.
Is included in that eight-point-eight the triangle between Fassler and, um, Highway one?
No.
I believe it's the same ownership.
Uh, the site across Seabowl Lane?
Yeah.
Um, to my knowledge, it's a separate owner, um, that's, the site is called The Rock, as it's been referred to in the past.
So I would also be open to the higher height limits here. Um, if, for portions on the lower, for portions, if we move the polygon or expand the polygon and do portions on the upper, I think we'd want to make sure that those are not as tall because that slopes higher. And this again is one where, in addition to maintaining the FAR of a bowling alley's worth of usable space, this is one where I would also have the higher open space requirement with the hope that there would be some sort of outdoor open space that would be open to the public.
Are we including the bowling alley in the open space as like a publicly usable commercials?
I was not.
How, how are we going to accomplish parking for the bowling alley, parking for all the units and get outside space?
Go up.
How far up?
I had this as fifty-five in my head.
Well, isn't there a condo being built basically across the street from this site too on the other side of Fassler?
Yeah, up a little ways.
How tall is that? Does anybody know?
I mean, my recollection is it's approaching the thirty-five-foot height limit.
Oh, it's got the same height limit, okay.
I'd be okay with fifty-five feet. I'm okay with keeping the indoor recreation space presently being used as a bowling alley.
I don't think we can demand that it's this building unless we take it out of the polyline, but I would, I would definitely be a proponent that the FAR for visitor, is this visitor-serving commercial? Is that what it's called?
Correct.
Considering how like important it is to the community to have that indoor space and how important it is to Pacifica economically, based on the Cosmont study, to have that space. I don't see a alternative for the site, so I think we're all on the same page.
I do have one question, hasn't that building been sold or under some kind of development agreement with the housing developer now? We got that letter from the owner of this.
Yeah, their partner to do something, but the.
But it's, he hasn't actually transferred the ownership then and just they, they have a development agreement if.
I mean, I don't think it's our responsibility as a commission to pave the way for a developer who bought a bowling alley or is in, in line to buy a bowling alley.
Good America's biggest housing developer.
Chris Godwin, uh, I'm not aware of whether the property ownership has changed yet. I am aware, as you are, uh, as you alluded to, that the, the, a letter was submitted by a residential developer who has expressed an interest in acquiring the site and attempting to gain city approval of a housing project on the site. That's the extent of my knowledge. Other than, the proposal likely would not include the Seabowl Bowling Alley remaining on the site.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood the current arrangement.
So Chair Hauser, to your earlier, um, idea of expanding the polygon in some way, uh, into the steeper part of the site, it is designated in the hillside preservation district overlay. There's nothing preventing, you know, the commission from providing that direction. I just would note that we've tried very hard in our housing element site inventory to avoid HPD-designated areas as a response to the community's desire to protect our hillside areas. However, you know, as mentioned, that's ultimately the commission's discretion.
If we keep the same ceiling and just transfer across to the hillside area, like you're not, is the reason we're avoiding the hillside areas?
It's a bridge to top-floor parking.
It's a what?
It's a bridge to top-floor parking.
I, I'd be in favor of granting them some ability to use the hillside that's otherwise just kind of invasive species of scree.
Yeah. I'm just going to take a quick gander on Google Earth.
Christian, quick question for you. If we do this site at fifty-five feet and then they get the allowances for low-income housing, what's the maximum height that this could end up being? Are, are they still capped at the fifty-five feet?
Potentially not if they were to invoke the density bonus law, uh, and be able to exceed that height limit.
Up to what point?
I, I don't, I don't have an immediate answer, um, if there is a maximum height. Part of the, part of the state density bonus law requires that the concession be related to decreasing the cost of providing housing, so at a certain point, increasing the height might actually increase the cost. Um, and so, uh, it's a difficult question to answer simply other than there may not be an effective height limit, uh, from a zoning standpoint.
Just trying to make sure we're not shooting ourselves in the foot.
Right, and that would be the case whether or not, you know, the commission put a fifty-five, forty-five, or thirty-five-foot height limit. So it's, that's not the deciding factor.
This is a, this is a low, um, income housing site or a very low-income housing site?
Lower-income site, correct.
So the eighty percent AMI?
Correct.
So I think that this is the right place for density and I think that whatever development standards we do here should reflect a building prototype that is not three stories, that has a minimum, you know, that couldn't be two stories or three stories. Yeah, minimum height. If we want this to be affordable housing.
You want to do minimum forty-five feet then?
How does staff feel about?
Because we're going to have a bowling alley underneath, there's ten feet of it.
I guess my only initial reaction is, um, establishing a minimum height may run counter to affordably constructing a particular type of housing if they were to get creative with modular or some other very small footprint housing type that could be accommodated at lower cost at a lower height, it could run at cross purposes with the lower-income housing objective for the site.
I just don't know what kind of low-income housing can accomplish sixteen dwelling units an acre and be less than four feet tall, or four stories tall.
I, I struggle to think of the same thing, but being prescriptive for a minimum height, you know, is not something that we've undertaken elsewhere and it could, you know, run counter to a portion of the site where maybe a different unit type is appropriate. It's just a very, um.
Should we count on greed? Should we count on greed to make them want to build it bigger?
I don't think they want to make a, I've said this before, I think the most profitable type of structure is one, two, and three stories. And it's not a five-story structure unless you're building affordable development and you're getting all sorts of grants and funds from the state.
I'd be willing to defer to your expertise if you have a notion about how we can accomplish that.
Well, I think what we need to, I think the first order of business is figuring out the FAR and the polygon. I think we need to start with that first. Because I think what we're trying to accomplish is getting, I'm going to guess, based on the site, that looks like sixty or seventy thousand square foot of indoor-conditioned visitor-serving commercial space. And it doesn't need to be a bowling alley because you can't force someone to open or, or run a bowling alley. But it needs to be something that serves Pacifica. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm with you a hundred percent.
So do we know the square footage of the bowling alley? Did I, I'm sorry, I'm tired, I don't know if I asked that already.
I mean, just rough numbers, you know, from an aerial photo, it looks like it's at least thirty thousand square feet. But that's, that's a rough estimate.
I'm going to do a little Google Earth polygon. And I'll get back to you guys.
Why don't we just defer this one?
Well, I feel like we're almost there.
Yeah, I feel like we're almost there too.
I'd, I'd up the parking number on this one so we don't lose all the parking for the visitor-serving commercial.
What's, what is the parking requirement for visitor-serving commercial currently?
Depends on the use type. Um, the most common commercial parking standard is one space per three hundred square feet of uh, floor area. But.
There'd be a hundred spaces for three thousand, thirty thousand square feet?
Sounds about right.
Don't recall what the, if we have a specific bowling alley parking standard for, for reference for the existing site.
My guesstimate is that bowling alley square foot as it currently exists would be about a hundred and thirty-five parking spaces.
Is that many in that lot now?
I don't know.
Um, just, uh, another frame of reference, um, for a recreational type use. Gymnasiums and skating rinks, one parking space for each five seats plus one parking space for each two hundred square feet of recreational floor area. So more intensive than the, the retail requirement for the recreational area component.
Okay.
I'll call it around a hundred minimum parking spaces for the visitor-serving.
Yeah, I think, I think we do visitor-serving, there's no net loss. And I think depending on what the use is, they do the municipal code required parking. And I think, how, I mean, what do people think about the polygon?
I'm not tied to it and I don't have any real opinion on going up the hill. I don't know if that makes it easier or harder. It gives the developer the, the option.
Do we want to take Pacifica Brewery out of the polygon?
I do.
Yeah, I would too, but it's two separate property owners, isn't it, so?
I believe it's a single property owner.
My understanding is it's the same underlying property owner, there's a separate parcel shown, given the, the long-term leasehold of a separate business.
Okay, yeah, two separate parcels, one owner.
Being that this is a study session, I'm inclined to reopen public comment, especially since you've stuck through till twelve-thirty at night. But I'd like to ask staff if that's allowed.
It's your prerogative, Chair Hauser, we just need to offer that to anybody that might be dialed in as well.
Yes, absolutely. So I'd like to, at this point in the night, I'd like to offer any members of the public an additional, um, two minutes of, um, public comment.
I appreciate it, but only just.
Please, please come up to the dais.
Only because I've spent quite a bit of time here, um, if you look at the dirt road just behind the polygon that you're interested in potentially expanding, from my rough calculations, only because I knew this was coming, you could bring that line to that dirt road and still at least go two or three stories and still not hit the plane of, uh, Roberts there just for aesthetics, you know, you'd still have the views and it wouldn't be, uh, you know, not pretty. Also, in terms of HPD, and I obviously have other interests in other projects in town, so I got to be careful there, but that area at the corner of, of the brewery has been plowed out and destroyed. It's not like this is a beautiful hillside that's never been damaged. And I believe Helen has signed a ten-year lease on the brewery as well and they didn't want to buy her out, so I don't think that's going away. That was my only comment, I appreciate it.
I appreciate it, thank you. Would anybody else in the room? You're good. Is there anyone on the phone with a hand raised? Or on Zoom?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, then I will reclose public comment. Okay, Commissioner Wright?
I'm good.
All right. Well, I, I would be amenable to going up to the dirt road and, um, removing the brewery from the polygon and requiring an FAR with no net loss to the bowling alley and municipal code required parking spaces for that, visitor-serving commercial space.
What, what happens to the parking for the brewery then, if we remove it from the polygon?
So my understanding is the way the property is delineated in the lease, um, it may include that strip of parking that essentially runs parallel with Highway one out to Seabowl Lane. So there would be ingress and ingress driveway and, you know, ample parking. I shouldn't say ample, but some off-street parking related to the Pacifica Brewery that's dedicated to that, that use.
So from a area standpoint, we could do a gypsy swap of both the brewery and the brewery's parking to change the line up to the dirt road. And it'd be a wash.
I'm not sure how the figures will work out, but that reconfiguration could occur to provide offsetting additional area.
Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I thought, that, um, I'm amenable to that for sure.
I am too, I just, I pulled up a parcel map and ownership data and it's, um, that area parallel to Highway one is part of the Seabowl, whoever the owner is now, is part of that parcel, whereas the brewery is its own parcel and a separate ownership, they could be the same company, just different names, but. So I don't, I don't know if you can split off part of that parcel and say it's out of the polygon now, because we need parking for this other.
We've done it on all the, I mean, every other site, we've taken a portion of the parcel, like Lindemar Shopping Center, I think you could do it.
But since you have more knowledge than you saw on your phone, so when you say that the brewery, are you saying the brewery plus that strip of parking that Christian referred to?
The parcel of the brewery is just the, basically the footprint of the brewery does not include that parking that seems to be for the brewery.
But we don't want to shoot them in the foot either.
I'm with you.
I think there's a way, um, whether it's engaging with the property owner or the business owner to try to modify the polygon, not only to exclude the building, but also whatever associated areas in their lease with respect to off-street parking, which I think I have a general mental picture of, but should be. picture of, but should be confirmed so we draw the polygon appropriately.
Can you think of a way that you can accomplish that? If, if for now, we just leave the brewery in there, but they don't build on that, and just enlarge the polygon? Would that be something that would be easier for you to manipulate later to get us to what our goal is?
I think I'd prefer to try to exclude the Pacifica Brewery, just to make it explicit that that's not proposed to be allowed for housing, you know? Depending when the housing element's adopted, you know, you know, eight years versus ten years of a lease, like, it's just a little too close for comfort in my mind. And we presumably want the brewery to stay there beyond the ten-year lease that's existing. So I think we can manage that. The numbers might change slightly. My gut tells me they may go down slightly for this site, but, you know, we, we still have a pretty significant buffer as it stands.
Okay.
So, so to reframe, we're gonna keep, we're gonna remove the polyline to, up to the dirt road or, or trail. I think we need to keep the trail out of the polygon so that it's still a usable trail. We'll keep the brewery and probably that strip of parking, which staff will clarify. The height will be up to fifty-five feet. And will, and should shrink down depending on grade between the path for the area that we added, so that it's all kind of commensurate. So as the grade increases, the height limit goes down. I'm okay with the lot coverage we established at the beginning. We talked about keeping the square footage of space. I'm okay with the two hundred square feet per DU if we do all of that, even though I would really like the four hundred, but that may be pushing it. And I would ask that staff explore the idea of a minimum height limit to ensure that we're getting affordable housing here.
Yeah, I'm with you on all of it.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay, we did it.
Did we have one we needed to go back to?
Did we talk about setbacks?
We didn't, but.
I don't feel a need to establish anything.
With the polygon here, I think we don't need setbacks.
I agree.
What was the hard one that we had to go back to? Didn't we pass on one?
No, we did all of them, but the hard one was Valley Mart Station, and.
Okay.
We kind of gave up.
We gave incomplete direction.
We had safety concerns that need to be thought through before we provide. Okay, so with that being said, does staff need any clarifications from us as a commission?
Not at this time, I think.
Thank you for bearing with us. This was a lot of, a lot of meeting. And then do you need any clarifications or restating of the sites that we asked to be added for the EIR reveal?
Let me make sure I captured all of them. So I heard to add eight oh one Oceana Boulevard, the Pavilion of Flowers site, Skyline and King, the Water Tank site, seven twenty-five Odstadt Boulevard, where the prior project had been approved, seven thirty Sharp Park Road, the church, Ramala Plaza and twenty-four eighty Skyline, and three forty Waterford, the vacant lot and the car wash together.
Yes, and then just to clarify, Ramala Plaza has two addresses, so the second one is six eighty-one Manor.
Thank you.
And I think what would be really helpful is two things, to establish that we would like as a commission to set development, these six development standards for the remaining sites at some point in the future, understanding that those are much simpler. And then that we would also like to cover the remain, like, come back and review where things ended up, but also really spend a good amount of time on the important remaining design standards, so things like, you know, building materials, any sort of, I want to say colors, but it's just because it's late, silly, windows, all of the little stuff that makes the architecture the architecture, so.
Like some residential design guidelines?
Correct.
Chair, I'm not following the last part about what you want to see with respect to that, or, or when. That's, that's the phase-two rezoning program in the housing element.
So, okay, so there's, there's several things. One is, we want to do this with the remaining sites. That's the first.
Right.
The second is, we want to, I mean, we want to have another chance to weigh in all of this once staff has had a chance to consume it and analyze it. But the last one is, we need to at some point, not now, not in August, but at some point, analyze what these sites look like. So, you know, at some point, we should be talking about, so for, for example, a very common objective design standard that you'll see is buildings can be no more than a hundred feet without a, you know, without starting a new building or a ten-foot by twenty-foot recess, right? We don't want boxes. We want thoughtful aesthetically pleasing architecture. At some point, we need to get to that.
Yes, and that point is planned to be the phase-two rezoning program in the housing element that would follow this phase-one rezoning program.
And so when does that come into play?
Sometime after January thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four, when the phase-one rezoning program is presumably put in place. Then we would be able to shift to focusing on the phase-two comprehensive zoning and objective standards process. That's gonna take the better part of a year, as mentioned earlier in the meeting.
Okay. I mean, my concern is that at some point, we have a gap where we've set the envelope that people could propose whatever aesthetic they want. So again, I don't think it's, I don't think it needs to be done on the same timeline as everything else that we're jamming on, but I think that, you know, if it's done in December of twenty-twenty-four, we're in trouble. You know what I mean? So maybe there can be some thought given to what the schedule looks like.
I agree entirely, and much thought has been given to that timeline. I'm not sure that I can realistically offer you a faster timeline than that.
In the meantime, to cover that gap though, can we say that until the residential design guidelines are approved, that everything needs to come before us?
No, because then it's not an objective design standard. Then it becomes subjective.
You got five objective design standards you want to throw out right now?
So there, there, there's some gray area. The key thing is, you can't use subjective standards to deny or reduce the density of a project. Generally speaking, design review is still acceptable and permissible as part of the discretionary review process, but you can't use that as a mechanism to circumvent the intent of the law, which is to approve housing projects that meet objective standards. But can you condition that they modify a facade to be more attractive while approving the project and giving them the number of units that they've applied for if they otherwise meet the objective standards? I think you can do that. So not all is lost, but if they refuse to do that, or if it would somehow affect the feasibility of a project, you know, we may be in a more difficult position. But changing materials or adding a different mix of window types and breaks in, in planes, like, I feel like there's probably still an opportunity to do that before we have, you know, the full, robust set of objective development standards adopted. But in simple terms, that's the best we can do for you right now, given the workload that we have and what's involved with getting this phase-one program across the finish line by January thirty-first of next year.
You, you don't work till quarter to one every night?
Just most nights.
Okay. It may be wise to adopt a snippet of some other city's objective design standard so we don't get boxes, just for temporary Band-Aid. So, maybe that's, yeah, please. Maybe that's something we could consider.
Does Chair have a favorite?
Well, I've seen very good standards in Morgan Hill that are citywide and not site by site. So even though they don't have completely the same architecture as us, I think they have really detailed objective standards, and it's not just six pages, it's, you know, thirty pages. So that would be a, an option.
Would that be something that would be worth our while as a commission to consider to read, to look over, to add in Irish, I can bite at the apple with Christian?
Can we, can we potentially do that as a, it's very, this is a very unconventional, weird.
I, I just, I don't think I can, in good faith, commit to doing more than the planning department's doing already with respect to the housing element update, the local coastal land use plan update, the quarry reclamation plan, and variety of other activities that are significant and being undertaken concurrently at this moment.
It's a really hard situation, and we really appreciate you doing this. We really appreciate it. If the opportunity presents itself, maybe that's something we could tackle.
Understood, and I think the main concern is the gap in time between, let's say, January thirty-first and whenever that year-long organic Pacifica-driven process might be completed. There may be an opportunity on February first to look at a near-term, couple month process to get something like the Morgan Hill standards adopted. That's something I can think about, but committing to do anything else between now and January thirty-first, I'm not able to do that.
I totally hear you. I think the thing for me is like, it's housing, and it's probably gonna be a lot of for-sale housing, which means it's gonna be housing for a really, really long time. And if we miss our window and we have a hundred years of really ugly-looking boxes, like, I just, if, if a stop, I hear what you're saying, but if an opportunity presents itself, please let us know. Okay. Any other item? Any other comments on this item? Okay, moving on to, we don't need to make a motion?
No, thank you for the feedback.
Okay, thank you. Commission Communications. Okay, I think we're all tapped. Stop communications.
Nothing further to add. Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion for adjournment, please?
A move, we adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, let's vote. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.